So, council, if we could have your attention, please. I'd like to welcome everybody that's in the gallery tonight. We have a substantial meeting ahead of us, so I will just ask the clerk to get us going, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, under Agenda Item 1, Adoption of Minutes, I have a motion. Actually, council, I'll just mention now, Councilor Turco is unable to be with us tonight. Councilor Nero, I'll be using you as the mover for all courtesy motions tonight. A motion by councilors Nero and Shoemaker, resolved that the minutes of the regular council meeting of 2016-10-11 be approved.
All in favor? Carried.
Under Agenda Item 3, Declarations of Pecuniary Interest.
Councilor Nero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Declaration on Agenda Item 8.1, The Lottery and Gaming Pursuit Team. My son's employed by OLG.
Councilor Brute.
7.1.
Thank you. Councilor Shoemaker?
Thank you. 11.1.1.5, it's a bylaw implementing a zoning matter from last week. It declined to the law firm.
Any other declarations, council? Seeing not at Councilor Christian?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 7.8.1, I'm employed with the Algoma District School Board.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
The declarations of pecuniary interest have been noted. Under Agenda Item 4, Approve Agenda as Presented, a motion by councilors Nero and Hoopinen, resolve that the agenda and addendum for the 2016-10-24 City Council Meeting as presented be approved.
All in favor? Carried.
Under Agenda Item 5.1, Community Recognition Award. Chris Roux, Chair Cultural Advisory Board, is in attendance.
I think it's Ms. Belair. Welcome to council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Provenciano, members of council, and invited guests. Your cultural advisory board has been busy this year with some items of interest to council. We currently have a vacancy for a city councillor, and the board is looking forward to working with a new representative in the near future. The culture policy has been updated and will be presented to city council for approval later in November. The advisory board has also recommended to council the culture grants this year totaling $53,900 to local well-deserving cultural groups. Now, that brings us to what is happening tonight. It is with great pleasure that I present to you the recipients this year for the Culture Recognition Award. But first, I would like to talk about the Stone Cradle by Tim Bartholomew. This wonderful art is located just outside the mayor's office. And this is a picture of the Stone Cradle. Stone Cradle is a representation of our identity and diversity of our community culture, combining the past, the present, and the future. The rock symbolizes the relics of geological past which has shaped our Canadian shield into some of the most breathtaking scenery around. These rock formations stand tall and rugged, holding with them the power of our past. The red ochre pictographs are legendary evidence of a past cultural heritage. The peregrine falcon symbolizes our present culture. The word "peregrine" means traveler or wander, an appropriate name for a bird so widely distributed. Our heritage, too, has become multicultural with people from all walks of life. Presently, the peregrine falcon has become a symbol of success, as they begin to reappear after almost being wiped out by the indiscriminate use of DDT. This holds true to our heritage today. If we, as a people, don't start the preservation process now, a prosperous future cannot be secured. This incredible recovery of the peregrine falcon can be attributed to the long, hard work and dedication of many concerned. This eye-opener should encourage individuals to continue to protect and enhance our natural and cultural heritage. The rest of the egg symbolizes our future cultures. The egg represents new life and new beginnings. As with the peregrine falcon, we, too, are given the responsibility to nurture and protect the coming future. We, as people, must stand together in order to teach our cultural heritage, which will be carried on to future generations. Neglect can be the result of a broken egg, easily eaten for breakfast without a thought. Will we deprive the next generation their right to culture? A heritage not had results in no culture. What we do today will affect. Many of our citizens have been recognized by city over the past 17 years for a total of 27 award recipients. I would like to thank council for having this award and acknowledging the role of culture in enhancing the lives of the citizens of our city. Each of our recipients will receive a certificate and a personal award with the engraved markings of Stone Cradle. I will now call upon Wayne Greco for the recognitions.
Our first recipient for the 2016 Community Recognition Award for Heritage Arts and Media Arts is Wendy Hamilton. Wendy Hamilton was instrumental in founding and organizing the oral history of Sioux-Saint-Murray. The goal of the project is to capture stories about the history of our city and the unique perspectives from both past and present residents who experienced pivotal and interesting times during Sioux-Saint-Murray's history. The project allowed many older citizens and prominent figures the opportunity to tell their stories of life in the city and its neighborhoods for the benefit of future generations. The project also serves as an excellent resource for historians, documentaries, and educators. Interviews are archived at the Sioux-Saint-Murray Public Library and are available for viewing over the Internet. Wendy has been involved in the local art scene dating back to the Sioux Theatre Workshop production of Miracle Worker in 1964. Over the years, she has worn the hat of playwright, producer, and creative director, and has served on numerous boards in our community. The Sioux Theatre Workshop, the Arts Council of Sioux-Saint-Murray, currently Shadows of the Mine Film Festival. A writer by trade, Wendy began her career at the local TV station and later returned to the station to write and produce the award-winning children's television series, Our Lady, Our Little House, employing all local talent, and to produce the last Lines Club Christmas Telethon in 2001, bringing together a roster of former broadcasters to help the show. What we do today will affect tomorrow. Many of our citizens have been recognized by the city over the past 17 years for a total of 27 award recipients. I would like to thank council for having this award and acknowledging the role of culture in enhancing the lives of our citizens today. Oops. I know. Her work has always been motivated... Excuse me, miss. I got it? See? You didn't kick me when I was supposed to. Her work has always been motivated by a deep connection to the Sioux and a desire to share local stories through art. In 1997, she founded Theatre in Motion, a theatre company specializing in the delivery of original productions for local events. Some of these original plays include "Mine Lands," presented as part of Sioux-Saint-Murray's Homecoming Celebration in 1998; "The Immigrant Stories," created for the Irish trade visit in 2001; "The Taking," created for the War of 1812 centenary celebrations; and "Moments in Algoma," about the Group of Seven's first visit to this area. Her wish for the oral history of Sioux-Saint-Murray is that the project continue for many years to come. I would like to say, on behalf of the Cultural Advisory Board, congratulations to Wendy Hamilton, recipient of the 2016 Community Recognition Award for Heritage Arts and Media Arts.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Wayne. Thank you, all the members of the Cultural Advisory Board. And thank you for the young man who put my name forward for this award, Michael Ward. Thank you for the acknowledgement. Those that know me know if I have the opportunity to walk up to a microphone and speak, I do. So I won't keep you long, but I did want to share a little bit with you today, because every person... Now and then, a person can have a good idea, and that's what the Oral History of Sioux-Saint-Murray project has proved to be. I'm so glad its value is being recognized, and I hope this recognition helps it to grow and continue for many, many years. The truth is, we've barely scratched the surface with the 53 interviews we've captured. There are so many stories out there, and I'm sure everyone in this room, and anyone watching at home, can come up with at least one person in no time at all that has a story to tell that deserves and should be in this archive. I've always felt there was something magical about this area. Maybe it's the location. And in recent years, I've been fortunate to be given a reason to look into our local history and create theatre from that history. It opened the doors, for example, on the indigenous history of my community, and that explains some of the magic quality that it has. These are things I didn't learn in school. They're things I learned through the love of the arts and the opportunity to create in the arts. I grew up on Albert Street, and I spent nine years, from kindergarten to grade eight, in Campbell Public School that had no auditorium, no gymnasium. We did phys ed in the basement. I also was a latchkey kid at a very early age because I had a working mum. And I was lucky that one job my mother got was as secretary to something called the Allied Arts. And so I had the opportunity, at a very young age, to be introduced to pottery, dancing, theatre, and it changed my life. We didn't have very much money, but mum always found a way to expose me to arts and culture. I remember her saving her pennies to take me to see the Royal Winnipeg Ballet when the Algoma Fall Festival was in its early years, and it was heaven. It formed my life. The Group of Seven artist Lauren Harris said, "A country that ignores the arts leaves no record of itself worth preserving." The same goes for a community. A community that ignores the arts leaves no record of itself worth preserving. That's why I believe it is an imperative that the arts never be referred to as an enhancement or as a nonessential quality of life item. It is essential. It forms our identity. It is how we are remembered. The Oral History of Sioux-Saint-Murray is now part of a newly-named nonprofit called Living History Algoma. This nonprofit originally was created for the War of 1812 events, and it's a lovely continuation that the mandate is to encourage the existence of cultural activities that uncover and share with the wider public the history of the Algoma region. So, we're really hoping that this opens the door, and that's why I like the podium, to artists and individuals who have ideas about how they'd like to explore and share our history. I'm proud to be part of the cultural community, and I'm very proud to be part of the Oral History of Sioux-Saint-Murray Committee, because, as you know, an idea takes people to get off the ground. And I'd really, really like to acknowledge very quickly Kathy Chinook, Joanne Farkas, Madge Sanderson, Karen Montgomery-Jones, who have all put their hearts and souls into helping this project get off the ground, and to the wonderful slew of interviewers that we have with us today. I won't name them all. Most of them are well-known within our community, who speak to the people in their interviews. So, thank you very much. I really appreciate this award.
So, thank you. Thank you very much, Wendy. We certainly appreciate the contribution you've made to our community. If I can just invite you up front here?
Go down this way?
Yeah, just come right around. We have a gift, and...
Thank you. Thank you.
Our second recipient for the 2016 Community Recognition Award for Heritage Arts, Protection, and Interpretation of Heritage Conservation, Catherine McCauley Yucich. Catherine Yucich has been a dedicated volunteer at the Ermentager Clerg National Historic Site for over 30 years and is past president of the Historic Sites Board. Kathy was instrumental in the capital construction project of the Heritage Discovery Centre opened in 2014. Previous projects included restoration of the Ermentager Old Stone House, summer kitchen relocation, and restoration of the Clerg Blockhouse, and the landscape plan for the heritage grounds. Kathy's contributions have allowed the community to witness innovative, creative, and outstanding support designing and interpreting our local Canadian heritage with national significance while preserving the historic integrity of our sites. Her talents of working with the cultural corridor, for culture, arts community, tourism partners, and downtown association are immeasurable. Congratulations to Kathy Yucich, recipient of the 2016 Community Recognition Award for Heritage Arts.
Thank you, everyone. I've been to city council a number of times, as you all know, usually asking for funds, so you'll all be relieved to know that that's not the case this evening. Anyway, I just want to briefly say thank you to the Cultural Advisory Board for their nomination, and the Historic Sites Board, particularly Kathy Fisher, who's... We've worked together for years, and it's just been a wonderful working relationship. We've gotten to know each other, our families, so... Amazing. Thank you, Kathy. I just briefly want to say that the Heritage Discovery Centre is proof that there are no impossible dreams, and that dreams begin with the first step of having a vision. And I just want to say, Sioux-Saint-Murray, dream big. Have the vision and dream big, because there are no impossible dreams. Thank you all so much.
Kathy, you have to come. So, that's tremendous advice. So, to both of the recipients, on behalf of myself and council, we'd just like to formally thank you for your significant contributions to our community. We all agree that arts and culture are essential, an important part of our community, the quality of life and its development. So, you've both made a tremendous contribution to that in your own way, and we thank you for it. You've shown a lot of leadership in our community. It's better off for your participation, so thank you. So, I think we are on to 5.2. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of council, under Agenda Item 5.2, Fringe North Festival. Tova Arbis, president of the festival, is in attendance to provide an update to council.
Welcome to council, Ms. Arbis.
Thank you very much, Mayor Provenciano, members of council, guests. It's a pleasure to be here today. So, my name is Tova Arbis. I am president and founding member of the newly-formed Fringe North International Theatre Festival. With me tonight are Alicia Moore, secretary and also founding member, and Peter Rowe, our very hard-working general manager. In absentia is other member Josh Ingram, who is busy bringing a new baby into the world.
Oh, that's great.
We have spent the past eight months consulting with community organizations, educational groups, theatre companies, other festivals, youth groups, downtown businesses, and many other individuals and organizations, with the goal of creating a fringe festival, theatre festival, here in Sioux-Saint-Murray. The 10-day festival would take place in the downtown core, featuring performances at a variety of venues, street performers, a children's stage, artisans, vendors, and a community gathering tent. This September, the Canadian Association of Fringe Festivals, CAF, approved Fringe North as its newest festival member, which means that Sioux-Saint-Murray has been added to the fringe map. This is a very big deal because CAF has continuously provided a template for success. We only have to look as far as the Edmonton and Vancouver fringes, which have been successfully running for 35 years; Toronto fringe, with a 27-year history; and the London fringe, which recently celebrated its 20th year. Fringe North International Theatre Festival will premiere August 10th to 20th, 2017, and we are eager to establish Sioux-Saint-Murray as the home of the Northern Ontario fringe. As a member of CAF, Fringe North becomes part of the Fringe Movement, a worldwide network of indie theatre festivals. The fringe theatre movement started in 1947 in Edinburgh, Scotland, and the first Canadian fringe festival was founded in Edmonton in 1982. Since then, the movement has spread across the continent, and CAF currently boasts 23 member festivals across Canada and the US. All fringe festivals share a set of common guidelines with the aim of providing an easily-accessible opportunity for all audiences and participants. Virtually anybody can submit a show to the fringe, and festivals place no limit on content, so shows are exciting, bold, and raw. Every fringe is quite unique as a result and different, and audiences come for the adventure and the community as much as for the plays themselves. Fringes are festivals run by artists for artists, and one of the conditions of joining CAF is that 100% of the box office ticket sales go to artists. In 2016, the Edmonton Fringe boasted ticket sales paid to artists of 970,000, Toronto Fringe over 400,000, and the London Fringe 140,000. And box office sales represent only a fraction of the economic benefit that fringes bring to their host communities. The challenges of living in small northern community are many, and as we have developed our strategies, we have constantly asked the question, what would be best for our community? Recent surveys done by the city and Queenstown BIA reveal that the top wish of residents for the downtown are more festivals. A fringe festival is the perfect urban festival for several reasons. It attracts tourists, drawing visitors and performers to the city who will need places to stay and eat, as well as additional activities to enjoy when they're not attending the festival's offerings. The festival would make use of downtown venues, which are usually vacant or significantly underused in the summer. It would provide income for artists and youth through performances or job creation with the festival itself. It would offer opportunities for new and increased business to local establishments, from walk-in traffic to partnerships with performance spaces and more. In addition to theatrical productions, Fringe North has plans to incorporate street performers, made possible in part through consultations with organizers of the former Busker Fest, thereby enhancing downtown attraction to community members and tourists alike. We would also include artisans and vendors, which increases revenue to local businesses and artisans. Fringes are affordable for everyone. No matter what one's ability, this is accessible theatre. So that means that our marginalized groups, seniors, families, students, those on a fixed income. A fringe festival allows room for all, connecting communities in very exciting ways. As we've talked to so many groups and individuals, we have received nothing but positive responses and expressions of support. We are pleased to have established firm partnerships with the Arts Council and the Queenstown BIA, and want to give special thanks to Russ Raven from the Arts Council, Josh Ingram from the BIA, and Peggy Lozon of the Aberdeen Group, who have offered tireless support in getting fringe established. We have also received strong expressions of support from the Chamber of Commerce, Algoma University, and Sioux College. Additionally, we have contacted Sioux Michigan BIA and Chamber of Commerce, Michigan Theatre Groups, Businesses, and then LSSU, with the goal of also attracting US performers and audiences. Collaborations with community partners on both sides of the border can enable Fringe North to attract tourists in 2017 and open the possibility of a Canadian-American in the future. Another important aspect of Fringe North's outreach has been to First Nations and Métis peoples. Our goal is that at least 25% of the plays, stories, and performances originate from the Aboriginal community. Additionally, Fringe North's policy of inclusion means that emphasis shall be placed on reaching the Francophone community and marginalized communities such as LGBTQ and persons with disabilities. We are a small fledgling, not-for-profit. Fringe North cannot achieve these objectives on our own, and we are actively working to solidify partnerships and cooperative relationships with community organizations. Sources of revenue for fringes include revenue from performer registrations, sponsorship of venues and events, and advertising sales on the website and in the program. In addition, fringes typically receive annual funding from provincial and federal granting agencies. Applications have already been submitted in partnership with the Arts Council and the Queenstown BIA to Ontario Celebrate 150 and OLG. We are also partnering on NOHFC and Trillium Grants, and have been approved for a $2,000 grant and $10,000 loan from SINO. We strongly believe that Fringe North will become a festival of significant attraction and recognition. In other communities, big and small, where a fringe has begun operations, we see tourists coming in, we see performers coming in, we see people joining what's called the fringe circuit and going from one festival to the other, spending their summers attending festivals exactly like what we're proposing. Even in small communities, like our sister fringe in North Bay, they have seen a significant increase in tourism and in excitement around the arts community for their own cities. We're humbly asking for council's strong endorsement of Fringe North and ongoing support to make this initiative possible. If you'd like to learn more, after my... Lots of information that I had for you today, we'd be happy to meet with you in smaller groups, on one-on-one basis, at your convenience, and answer any questions that you might have. In the meantime, I would like to thank you very much for your time and attention this evening, and if you do have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
So, before we get to questions, in short, I'd just like to say, great work. I mean, it's obviously a very large project, and it's got a lot of community partners, and it sounds fantastic from my perspective. So, really, thank you for the leadership and the work. Counselor Myers was the first person with her hand up here, so go ahead, Counselor Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, yes, Tova, fantastic, and of course, Peter. I've been working off and on with Peter for... How many years is it, Peter, that you get to this point? About five? It's been a lot of hard work for a long time, and thank you very much. In our package that you gave us, Tova, you've got the board of directors here. You are president. Peter is the general manager. Good to see Josh Ingram as a director, and the others you mentioned, Peggy and Alicia. My question is around, and I may have missed it, I know I quickly stepped out for a moment there, the cultural grant that the city has, the intake of applications, and I'm going to ask through you, Mr. Mayor, maybe to Mr. Clerk. When is that? Do you happen to know when that deadline is, or perhaps our Commissioner of Finance knows? There's a window once a year, too.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. To Counselor Myers, the festival is aware of the different grant programs that we have. They have chosen not to apply to the cultural group of grants. They are working closely with the arts community, and they chose not to try and take another piece of that pie, so to speak. They do have an application in...
In the meantime, I would like to thank you very much for your time and attention this evening, and if you do have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
So before we get to questions, in short, I'd just like to say, great work. I mean, it's obviously a very large project, and it's got a lot of community partners, and it sounds fantastic from my perspective. So really, thank you for the leadership and the work. Counselor Myers was the first person with her hand up here, so go ahead, Counselor Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, yes, Tova, fantastic, and of course, Peter. I've been working off and on with Peter for... how many years is it, Peter, that you get to this point? About five? It's been a lot of hard work for a long time, and thank you very much. In our package that you gave us, Tova, you've got the board of directors here. You are the president, Peter is the general manager. Good to see Josh Ingram as a director and the others you mentioned, Peggy and Alicia. My question is around, and I may have missed it, I know I quickly stepped out for a moment there, the cultural grant that the city has, the intake of applications, and I'm going to ask through you, Mr. Mayor, maybe to Mr. Clerk, when is that... do you happen to know when that deadline is, or perhaps our Commissioner of Finance knows? There's a window once a year, too.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers. The festival is aware of the different grant programs that we have. They have chosen not to apply to the cultural group of grants. They are working closely with the arts community, and they chose not to try and take another piece of that pie, so to speak. They do have an application to our other program, our operating and sustaining grants program, and you will be dealing with that once we get to the budget.
Great, thank you. And I think that, Peter, I know you did a lot of work with tourism of Sault Ste. Marie and EDC, trying to meet with them, too, both on the business startup side and also their festival marketing side. So terrific, and thank you. I just echo what the mayor said, and, you know, I'm sure we'll be glad to help any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Seeing none, this matter is going to come before us, I think, Ms. Arbis, when the application goes through the process. But again, we certainly appreciate your hard work, and it sounds like a fantastic event, and I look forward to it. I'm sure you'll be successful.
Thank you very much for your support.
Take care.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we can now move to the consent agenda prior to hearing the planning applications at five-thirty.
Okay, council, we're on the consent agenda. Counselor Myers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, six-point-five, the information flow policy.
Go ahead.
This is one that I believe the clerk may be answering. The... I had a couple of questions around the issue that was mentioned in here, and I don't know that I noted what page it was on of the report. Mr. Clerk, you may know, but it mentioned in here that one of the ways that we ought to interact with staff, between councillors and staff, and I'm going to just read it, "Councillors should include their wardmate in the correspondence to staff to avoid duplication of work." Generally speaking, staff should respond to both ward councillors when responding to a ward-specific constituent request. And I think that all of us, some of us that are getting kind of long in the tooth here especially, have found over the years that one of the issues is that often, for whatever reasons, and it really doesn't matter, constituents are more comfortable contacting one councillor over another. And I think that this is bordering a wee bit on the privacy aspect for that particular constituent. So I had asked if we could remove that one sentence, and I believe the clerk has some comment on that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers. While I understand where the councillor is coming from, it is, on staff's point of view also, we see as sometimes an unnecessary duplication. I'm wondering if in these cases, it's just a matter of how we use the policy, and if the councillor copies the wardmate on the request. Obviously, we would copy the wardmate on the response, and perhaps as we look into how we actually use the policy, we might be able to overcome the...
Then I'm going to ask for a very minor one-letter change in this. Instead of "should," it would say "could." I guess that's two letters. This is a draft, and I think you put it forward as a draft for comment. So I'm asking if, instead of it saying councillors should include their wardmate, that it says councillors could include their wardmate. Would that friendly change be received?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers and the rest of council. That would be acceptable to staff to make that change. I will note also, there was a... something brought to our attention by Counselor Shoemaker, where we had an inconsistent term where we were using agenda package and then just agenda. We will make that change as well, to show that it's agenda package on both terms.
Thank you.
Is that it, Counselor Myers, on that policy?
Thank you.
On the same policy, Counselor Mano, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Perhaps a question that you may be in a position to address, or whomever on staff is in a position to address. In reviewing the policy, I thought that there was some definite aspects of this that could relate to various boards and committees that we all sit on, that are boards and committees of council, specifically those aspects of the municipal act and the open meetings provisions. I've found in my time on council and in various boards that I sit on that the email discussions and those aspects of the open meeting provisions of the rules sometimes seem to be something that probably would be of benefit to those groups as well. I'm wondering if there's a way for us to, if approved, this policy could somehow be disseminated amongst all of our city council boards and committees.
I'm going to defer all questions in this policy to the clerk's office, because it was entirely developed by the clerk's office, and I'm not in a position to answer any questions.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Mano. Certainly, if approved, the policy would be disseminated to all our council boards and committees. It does deal with a bit with procedural matters. Certainly, we do provide advice and training from time to time for the various boards and committees and the administrative staff, who serve as a resource to them, and this would certainly be part of that dissemination.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have Counselor Nero next, and then Counselor Bruni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for Mr. White. Mr. White, on page five of the policy, it speaks regarding constituent service requests, and for council members to email those requests to a senior management team recipient. Am I understanding that correctly? You want everything that we would normally send to a general mailbox for service, let's say from public works and traffic, to go to a senior management team member?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Nero. Our avenues for dealing with service requests, especially in the area of public works, are already defined, and I'm sure you would direct a constituent directly to that service request portal. This speaks a little more to a councillor contacting staff because there's some concern about the particular service request, or it's a service request that's not captured by a routine process that we would have, such as our work order process.
Okay, so if we then... normally, we would send it into the general mailbox, and if we did a follow-up, and for some reason it wasn't getting acted upon, then you're saying we should direct it to the senior management team?
That's correct.
Which we would normally do anyway.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bruni.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. White, regarding on page four, intergovernmental communications council. Members of council should not directly contact regulatory bodies regarding regulatory compliance concerns. Can you just explain a little bit on that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bruni. In general, but especially regarding regulatory compliance concerns, you need to remember, of course, that council exercises its authority collectively, and that members of council on an individual basis shouldn't be dealing with issues such as that. They should be either having staff deal with it or having the... putting a request through to the mayor as the head of council to deal with the issue.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Counselor Bruni? Anything else in the information flow policy, on the same... on that policy? Nope? Okay, nothing else in that policy? Any other matters in consent agenda, Counselor Mano, you had your hand up?
Yes, item six-point-six, please, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, six-point-six, the Downtown Business Improvement Area Board of Directors.
Thank you. I just want to take this opportunity briefly to discuss the appointment of the new board, and I want to thank all those members who put their names forward to be a part of the Downtown Business Improvement Area Board of Governors. The past year has been certainly not without its fair share of challenges. In the previous year, when the interim board took over last October, the goal was... the starting point was for us to develop a group of policies, procedures, and really, in effect, a governance model that could allow us to operate within the proper framework, if I can put it that way. That was something that was severely lacking in the past, and I'm very happy to report that we were able to develop those policies, procedures, and a proper governance model. We had a number of setbacks in the sense of having lost our previous manager and having to select a new manager, who we heard a great deal earlier, Mr. Josh Ingram, who's currently... him and his wife are currently expecting a new addition to their family. So I just wanted to recognize the work that the previous board put in and look forward to working with the new board moving forward to try to take what we've built on and move forward from that. So those are all my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on six-point-six? Counselor Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple. The first one is six-point-one, point-two, the Convergent Energy Invitation. Just for the record and for a reminder, the invitation went out to that company that if, should they come forward, the PUC would also be invited to any presentation that Convergent would be giving.
Yep, sure.
Fair enough.
Okay, what's your other matter, Counselor Christian?
Yeah, six-point-four, the city's credit rating. From, once again, Standard and Poor's has given us our credit rating. All things considered, I think it's a pretty impressive result, a double-A rating. And inside of the report, as everybody's read, it says that, you know, compared to our peers, we're doing a relatively good job. We've got good financial management, low liability, lots of room for debt financing, should we choose to use that down the road, so that's good news. But I do have a couple of questions. I'd like to direct us to either the CAO or to Michelle. It says in here that our liquidity right now is good. Was there a conversation with the actual representatives from the company and their take on the SR situation? Is that taken into account, the way we've had to look at our reserves, et cetera? Is that all taken into account? Because I see that, you know, they're saying our liquidity is solid, et cetera, so just to comment on that.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian, and then I'll turn it over to the CFO, Treasurer. Of course, there's conversations about that as well. Standards and Poor's has a standardized process that they go through in terms of looking at the... not only the financial balances, the financial statements in the balance sheet, but what's going on in terms of the local economy. So we have discussions with a number of differing parties, from staff, from EDC, from SMIC, that are at the table when that occurs, and so that has been taken into account. I can't speak to all the mechanics of what they do to make that assessment, unless they get that information, but it is taken into account, and I'll look to the CFO if she could add anything to that. And she's not shaking her head, so no.
Counselor Christian, I don't think the CFO is adding anything to that. You couldn't see your head from your perspective.
Okay. Another question. I noticed... I don't know if this is the report that always comes in. I know that this particular version of it is somewhat different than we've had in the past in terms of trend, future trends, et cetera. Do they... does the company ask for any input in terms of the types of information that the city would like? And the reason why I ask that is because, you know, you looked at... you look at numbers where it says, you know, we're twenty-one-point-five percent of the city's operating revenues, and there's all kinds of numbers. But is there a way that they... if we could pass on to them, if they're interested in providing some kind of comparators? Is there any way to compare us to an average, to our counterparts, whether it's Northern Ontario or the province? Because these numbers in isolation don't... they're important because of the way they're embedded in the literature. You can make out what they're trying to say. But we don't have any real way of comparing ourselves to other cities, because it seems that we always get pretty good ratings compared to other cities. But it'd be nice if there were thresholds or numbers varying degrees of success.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to CFO Treasurer, Shell, but before I do so, again, we already have avenues where we do make those type of comparisons. The example that comes to mind is the BMA study, where we do reviews relative to other communities. Certainly, Standards and Poor's or any of the credit rating agencies who would be the successful bidder on any of our RFPs, we take this out to RFP to get the rating agencies to do the rating, do do those comparisons, and they do take into account the relative, not just absolute number value in terms of those various categories of financial and other aspects. So they're just done. Point taken in terms of how it's articulated in the report. It's maybe not as detailed as maybe council might want to look for, but with that, I'll turn it to the CFO Treasurer for her comments.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian. As the CAO alluded to, the credit rating is a very specific template that the Standard and Poor's uses, and they're comparing to not only municipalities but other, like peers could be... school boards could be other different agencies such as that, as well as profit organizations. So to have a comparison to a northern community, we'd have to look at something very specific. And you have to keep in mind also, not all communities do these types of credit ratings if they don't have debt out there through debentures. Most agencies and other municipalities like us would not have this done.
Okay, and I understand that point. It would be nice, though, when they're throwing out statistics, if at least in their report, they set a threshold that if you're thirty times a particular number, that that's an exceptional, as opposed to just a number in isolation, because it sounds good. But I have no way of interpreting exactly what it means. So for the record, that would be something, if they were asking for input in a way to make it more useful for us, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, we will certainly pass along those comments.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Anybody else on the Standard and Poor's report? So Counselor Butland on the Standard and Poor's report?
Yes, and Counselor Christian's thoughts are certainly something that I said, you know. It would be nice to have comparators and see where we go from there. I did try to get some of them, but it wasn't easy, so I would ask that perhaps next year we could see that. And I've said the same thing for the last ten years, probably, that this is a tremendous... as an old school teacher, this is a great report card, and we're always accused of being big spenders and spendthrifts, but this shows, no, that is not the case. We have spent wisely, saved wisely. It's not terribly glamorous, even for taxpayers. They say, "So you have a great rating, so what?" So we're not going to save you anything on your tax bill, but what it does do, it puts us in a good position for debenture spending if we need to do it, and doesn't put us at risk. And to further accentuate what I'm saying, I always use the comparator, per capita, the debt is less now than it was fifty years ago. And I say, "That's pretty startling." So thanks. I think it's good that we have this yearly report, and we should be quite proud of it rather than saying, "Well, I don't know about it." Again, I don't think the taxpayers are going to be saying, "So what?", but it does hold us in good stead. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Myers, on the same matter? Okay. Those are your matters, Counselor Christian, Counselor Bruni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess agenda item six-point-eight, risk liability regarding the water fountain.
Okay.
Should we pull that off, or we can discuss it?
Would you like to pull it off, consent?
Well, I'm asking councillors, would...
So Counselor Nero, you have a thought on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I think we should pull it off. I think I may be requesting a recorded vote on that one.
Okay, so we'll remove six-point-eight from consent. Okay, that's it? Any other matters in the consent agenda, council? Counselor Butland.
This one, six-point-one-one, your involvement along with the other Northern Ontario major city mayors. Good work, much appreciated. And the only thing that is not there in that, in the particular report, was talking to Amy DiMatteo, who is executive director of FedNOR, and I asked him specifically, "What is the budget for FedNOR now?" It's thirty-one million dollars a year, and as the report does indicate, NOHFC is a hundred million dollars. So thirty-one million dollars spread out over Northern Ontario is not a heck of a lot. And in these difficult economic times, usually the cut in any activities, initiatives, economic initiatives are one-third, one-third, one-third. The one-third of the thirty-one million is not going to go far enough, so good luck to all of us in this one.
Yeah, we're working hard on that, and we'll be discussing it. The Noel Mayors are going to be in Sault Ste. Marie at the end of the month. I think council's been invited to meet with them also.
I think counsel's been invited to meet with them also, and we're going to keep this matter front and center. It's not, obviously, the size of the pot of money is a very disconcerting thing. It's shrunken over the years. But also, the administration of it is difficult, too. And the federal government really has to become much more of a partner in Northern Ontario than it has been in the last seven, eight years. So we'll be pushing that point, and I appreciate the comments on the position paper, we worked hard on it. So that's the consent agenda, I think, counsel. If we could, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, members of counsel, I have a motion by counselors Nero and Hoopanen, resolve that all the items listed under date 2016-1024, Agenda Item 6, Consent Agenda be approved as recommended, save and accept Item 6.8.
All in favor? Carrie, we have 10 minutes before consent. Mr. Clerk, should we deal with 6.8 or attempt to deal with 6.8?
Before planning.
We're sorry, before planning, I apologize.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, we can deal with 6.8.
Counsel Bruni, we can let you speak to that to begin with, or should we read the motion first?
I'll just read it first, Mr. Mayor. The report of the risk manager is before you, and a motion by counselors Nero and Shoemaker, resolve that the report of the risk manager concerning risk and liability regarding water fountain, Gouley Avenue, Second Line West be received, and the Public Utilities Commission of the City of Sioux St. Marie be directed to cap off and permanently stop the flow of water at the fountain located at Gouley Avenue and Second Line West.
Okay, Counsel Bruni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just be very, very brief. I'm in support of this. I do like to see the fountain closed or shut off during the winter months. Unfortunately, because of the legal issues that was provided to us, the city is in danger of other lawsuits if people do fall. But there are a lot of people out there that use this water fountain, and so personally, I'd like to see it open in, I guess, May, whatever schedule that they have listed here, May 15th or May 16th to open it, so that's it.
Okay, so we'll go Counsel Nero, then Romano, then Shoemaker.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yes, basically, I certainly support staff's recommendation, and, you know, we can talk about the possibilities of other slips and falls, but those are, I don't think that that is really the main reason on capping this water off. I think the important issue below, beside all this, is what staff brings up that has to do with the Safe Drinking Water Act, and counsel's responsibility to make sure that the safe, that water is safe to drink, no matter where it's taken from. And we can certainly direct or ask the PUC to make sure that this water is safe and potable at all times, they could do that. But we can't control what people, what kind of containers they're using to fill water, what kind of cross-contamination is happening. I think it's imperative that we just close this well and rid ourselves of that liability.
Thank you, Counsel Nero. Counsel Romano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo the comments of counselors Bruni and Nero. I will mention one thing. When this first came across our plate, I was surprised, and I think maybe a number of other counselors were surprised as well, with the origin of where this water comes from. And having grown up in the area not far from that well, used it a lot, family members and friends relied upon that well a lot of the time. And I had no idea that that wasn't operating off of a well. And a lot of people operated under the assumption that it was some kind of a different source of water, it was a better source of water than we all get in our homes. And it was interesting to learn that that water is the exact same water that comes out of each and every one of our faucets on...
It's treated PUC water.
Yeah. So at the end of the day, just, I only say that for members of the community that may have been unaware of where that water comes from, and it is, at the end of the day, the same water we all use within the city, so those are my only comments.
Yeah. Counsel Shoemaker.
Yeah, thank you. Counsel Nero touched on my point, but I was just going to ask, through you, to City Solicitor, what are the potential liabilities under the Safe Water Drinking Act? I mean, what could the repercussions be if this were left, you know, working and something happened?
Thank you. And through you, to Counsel Shoemaker, in addition to the liability that's been touched on in terms of people getting injured when it ice is over, we, as the owner of the infrastructure, have an obligation, and for counselors, it's actually a personal obligation, to ensure that the drinking water is safe. After, Walkerton, the province has become very, very protective of drinking water properly for residents. So your obligation goes beyond just knowing that the water is safe. You really have a duty to ensure that when people take water from a source that we are providing, the city is the owner of the infrastructure, that it is, in fact, safe water. And as Counsel Nero suggested earlier, we don't know what kind of containers are being used. That's what potability really means, when the water leaves the tap. So my obligation as counsel for city council is to say, I think it ought to be closed permanently, and I guess as, because of that. And if that was not agreeable, that our alternative would be to at least cap it in the winter.
In terms of personal liability, thank you for that, that's helpful. In terms of personal liability, I mean, what are we looking at?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Shoemaker. Under the Act, individual members of council can be sued for damages that a person would endure from drinking unclean water.
Okay, well, that, yeah, thank you. That alone seems to justify closing it, in my opinion.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Counsel Christian. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess a question maybe to City Solicitor or the CAO. If we approve this, if we agree with staff recommendation, when would we look at closing it? Would there be any notice period posted for those that access the well currently?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Christian. Our recommendation would be that the notice is this public meeting, and that it be closed forthwith, but of course, the recommendation could be amended by city council.
I'm sorry?
It's closed forthwith, so the direction would go to the PUC after this meeting, the PUC would put in the work order, and it would simply be closed whenever the PUC staff would be able to complete the work order.
Yeah, it would be nice if there was at least a short window to notify outside of, you know, press coverage, et cetera, so, just my opinion. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on that? Counsel Fatah?
Mr. Mayor, it's really unfortunate that we live in a world where people don't take responsibility for their actions, but they reach for speed dial to call their lawyer when something like this happens. But my question to legal is, why, just so people will understand this, why is it that a sign that would say, "Use at your own risk," would not be satisfactory? Because we have all kinds of locations where people can trip and fall, or do something where they either have emotional damage or they have physical damage, and they'll do the same thing that happened here. Can you tell me, tell us if, why the sign, "Use at your own risk," is not able to satisfy this issue such as this?
Certainly, through you, Mr. Mayor, Counsel Fatah. There's lots of case law that says signage generally is ineffective, particularly for the target group. So that means if you've got young people, or you've got people whose first language is not English, a sign saying, "Be careful," is just not sufficient. In this case, we have the added liability, the foreknowledge, because we've already had a claim where somebody was injured, and thankfully, that injury was relatively minor. It could be a very severe injury, so a sign is just not sufficient, in my legal opinion.
Counsel Hoopanen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with everybody that I've been listening to tonight. I just, one question hasn't been brought up, is who is actually paying for that water that's coming out of that tap?
That's a good question. We'll direct that to the Treasurer.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Hoopanen. This would be like a tap running in your house, and the homeowner would pay. So in this case, this tap is running for the whole city, so anybody that is on PUC water is covering this as an additional cost.
Thank you.
Counselor, that's answered. So counsel, just to be clear, I support the sentiment councils expressed. There's three really important issues here. One, we have to clear up the misconception this is some kind of Artesian well, it's treated PUC water. So we have, you know, the whole population essentially subsidizing the cost of water for a part of the population. But there's two liability issues. A sign that says, "Use your own risk," doesn't deal with slip and falls, because you're not using at your own risk in that case. You're walking by, and there's water all over the place, it freezes, and you slip and fall, and we are absolutely liable for that. So that's not going to bait that. The second thing is, we're all personally liable for the potability of the water in this community. And that's a high risk, especially when we don't, you know, know how the water's being potted. So, you know, it's something that's just historically we've been, we've done, but it's something that I think its time has run its course, and although it might not be a popular decision, I certainly believe it's the right one. I think Counsel Nero asked for a recorded vote. Mr. Clerk?
Mayor, members of council, recorded vote has been called for. Counselor Butland?
For.
Counselor Myers?
For.
Counselor Bruni?
For.
Counselor Nero?
For.
Counselor Romano?
For.
Counselor Shoemaker?
For.
Counselor Hoopanen?
For.
Counselor Christian?
For.
Counselor Fatah?
For.
Mayor Provenciano?
For.
Motion carries unanimously.
That moves us to the planning agenda at 5:30.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, under your planning agenda, you have two items. The first, 7.6.1, Report of the Senior Planner is on the agenda for your consideration, and a motion by counselors Nero and Shoemaker, resolve that the report of the senior planner concerning A1116Z899 Second Line West be received, and that council deny the applicant's request to rezone the northern 21.3 meters of subject property from C4 General Commercial Zone to C.4. S, General Commercial Zone with a special exception, to permit dwelling units to be located on the ground floor, and that council rezone the northern 21.3 meters of the subject property from C.4 General Commercial Zone to R.2. S, Single Detached Residential Zone with a special exception with the following provisions: to permit two single detached dwelling units on the subject property, to reduce the exterior side yard setback requirement for the western dwelling unit from four meters to two meters, and to require the applicant to purchase and attach three meters of the adjacent North Eden Street right-of-way to the subject property prior to the passing of the implementing zoning bylaws, and further that the legal department be requested to prepare the bylaws necessary to affect the same.
Okay, Mr. McConnell, I'm going to turn to you and ask, you can give maybe a summary to the folks that are, also to counsel, the folks that are here in the chambers, and also the folks that are watching at home.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just wondering if before we began, we could establish if the applicant or a representative is in attendance tonight?
Absolutely. Is the applicant in attendance tonight? Who is the applicant, Mr. McConnell, so I can...
Mr. Marshall, sorry, there he is, yes.
Okay, so Mr. Marshall is in attendance?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council's familiar with this application, although it has gone through a couple of versions. This is the former Brookfield Market property on the corner of Second Line and North Eden Street. The application has been amended and simplified somewhat as a result of discussions that the applicant and staff have had with the neighbors. At this point, all the applicant is requesting is that the former Brookfield Markets property, the former store, be rezoned to allow the redevelopment of that property as a single-family Some time back, we discovered as part of the review of this, that part of that property is actually on the city's right-of-way. There is a longstanding easement in effect to permit that. What's being recommended tonight is that council approve the rezoning, subject to the applicant making application to the city to acquire an additional 10 feet of municipal property. That has already been reviewed by our engineering group and by our public works and transportation people, and they are in agreement that that would be the best solution for all parties. That would allow him to have sufficient side yard to create a bit of a landscaped space, and also give it sufficient frontage, should that and the existing house ever be severed. So that's a bit of a long way around a bit of a discussion. It is recommended for approval. Mr. Marshall is here tonight, if anyone has any questions of the applicant.
Mr. Marshall, would you like the opportunity to speak in favor of the application?
I'm sorry?
Would you like the opportunity to speak in favor of the application? Do you have anything you want to say about the application?
I would say so.
Okay. Counsel, do we have any questions for either Mr. Marshall or Mr. McConnell? Counsel Fatah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So just so that we're clear on this, I just want to understand what's being recommended and what's being denied. Will the Brookfield building, as it now stands, be allowed to be, is the request to have that allowed to be changed to a residential building, is that going to be accepted as long as the right-of-way issue has been rectified?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Fatah, that's correct. That's the request before council tonight.
Okay, so we're talking about this dwelling being converted to residential, plus two additional lots?
Through you again, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Fatah. At this point, the applicant's only intent is to proceed with the conversion of the building, and no additional severances. He's indicated that he is not interested in pursuing that. However, I mean, it's still something that either the applicant or another owner at some point in the future might be, might want to pursue. But the request before council tonight is only to convert the former corner store into a house.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Counsel Romano, go ahead.
Just to be clear, this particular house presently, the second floor, is permitted for residential dwelling use? It's just the main floor that is not?
What we're dealing with is the, the existing house will also be rezoned as a residential house. The corner store, which I believe is only one floor high, whether it's one floor or two floors in height, Mr. Mayor, it will be also able to be converted to a residential dwelling.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Is there anybody that's present, that's present to speak against the application or is opposed to the application?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sir, if you can just introduce yourself, please?
Yes, I will. My name is Bart Bradley. I live at 194 Roosevelt Avenue, which is just a couple lots. It's not so much in opposition, but could I ask the planning director a couple questions?
Sure.
I have a, like, they were just talking about, you know, residents in the house, or, and now we're single detached in the store. Well, my question is, if you're taking a change from a C4 to an R2 with a special exemption, does that set a precedent for the rest of the property owners in that, in this area, in the Brookfield area?
Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Bradley, the, I mean, every decision that council makes sets a precedent.
You're going to do merits on me?
Sets a precedent. In this case, we're dealing with two buildings, one of which is commercial and which will be converted to residential, and it'll be landscaped. I think it'll fit in a lot better with the neighborhood. That is the extent of the application. So at this, at this point, it is being recommended. I think it's less intense use than having the convenience store there before, where you did have trucks parking, you did have people coming and going in significant numbers. So yes, I think overall, for the neighborhood, I think this is a win-win for everybody.
Yes, we were just concerned about the severance, possible severance, which isn't on the table today. But, you know, some of the questions we had, like, for instance, and another question, they were talking about 10 feet right along the store, the western side. Now, is that just the store side, or is that going all the way around the property? That's just right by the store, right?
Well, that would, Mr. Mayor, again, to Mr. Bradley, that would extend the length of the property, I imagine. I mean, that would be subject to a detailed review, but that would likely extend the full 10 feet, the length of the property. That property is currently not used by the city.
And that, are you talking about going all the way down to the southern boundary, where Roosevelt is, or...
Well, to the extent of Mr. Marshall's property, yes.
Thank you very much.
So is that the extent of the questions you had, sir?
Yes.
No further opposition?
She would like to...
So are you speaking in opposition to the application, ma'am?
Actually, I have a question for council regarding the property.
Could you just introduce yourself for council?
I'm sorry, my name is Sandra McFarlane. Originally, the Brookfield Market was Woods Market or Woods Store, and at that time, the store also had two fuel pumps in front of it. Have those tanks been removed from the ground? That was back in the early 1940s. That was back in the early 1940s.
Mr. Mayor, I can answer that question. As a condition of a building permit, when you're changing from a commercial use to a residential use, you have to do an environmental assessment, so that will form part of the required work, which becomes part of the building permit application. So if the fuel tanks are still there, yes, they'll have to be removed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments, either from the gallery or from council? So we've given people an opportunity to speak in favor of, and people want to speak opposed. We gave councillors an opportunity to ask questions. It seems to me like we're ready to vote. Counselor Shoemaker?
Resolution?
Sure, reread? Yeah, so, Mr. Clerk, can you please reread the resolution?
It's a motion by counselors Nero and Shoemaker, resolve that the report of the senior planner concerning A1116Z899 Second Line West be received, and that council deny the applicant's request to rezone the northern 21.3 meters of subject property from C.4 General Commercial Zone to C.4. S, General Commercial Zone with a special exception, to permit dwelling units to be located on the ground floor, and that council rezone the northern 21.3 meters of the subject property from C.4 General Commercial Zone to R.2. S, Single Detached Residential Zone with a special exception, with the following provisions: to permit two single detached dwelling units on the subject property, to reduce the exterior side yard setback requirement for the western dwelling unit from four meters to two meters, to require the applicant to purchase and attach three meters of the adjacent North Eden Street right-of-way to the subject property prior to the passing of the implementing zoning bylaws, and that the legal department be requested to prepare the bylaws necessary to affect the same.
Counselor Mano, as I was being read, you'd indicated you have a question?
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to note, as the councillor, the only councillor present here today from Ward 6, I just wanted to indicate to council, and for the benefit of the public, we do have a handful of letters or emails that were provided to planning staff in opposition to this particular request. I can note that I have not been in any way contacted personally with respect to any concerns, and just for everyone's benefit, the nature of the concerns seem to reflect the type of area, the size of the lots in the Brookfield area, being World War II homes with half acre to acre lots, and that seems to have been a concern for some individuals, saying that's the nature of the area, that's, and it would be, in this type of proposal, shrunk, I suppose, some of the lots would be. Absent the concerns that have been raised herein within the application materials, I have received no contact or concerns with respect to the application.
Okay, so are we prepared to vote, council? All in favor? Carried.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, our second item is 7.6.2, report of the senior planner is on your agenda, and a motion by counselors Nero and Hoopinen, resolve that the report of the senior planner concerning application A1516Z188 Kohler Street be received, and that council rezones the eastern half of the subject property from R.2, Single Detached Residential Zone, to R.3. S, Low Density Residential Zone with a special exception, to, one, permit two multiple detached dwellings and one semi-detached dwelling to be constructed on the same lot; two, to reduce the frontage requirement from 18 meters to 17 meters for the parcel which is proposed to be occupied by a semi-detached dwelling; three, to reduce the north interior side yard requirement for the middle triplex and semi-detached dwelling from three meters to 2.0 meters. Council, just note that that's a slight change that the planning director had advised. Instead of 2.1 meters, it's 2.0. And four, that through the site plan control agreement, a five-meter easement in favor of PUC Services, Inc., be registered along the north lot line of the subject property, and further that the eastern half of the subject property be deemed subject to site plan control, and that the legal department be requested to prepare the bylaws necessary to affect the same.
Okay, so I'm going to turn to you again, Mr. McConnell, to give a summary of this application, and then we'll give the applicant an opportunity to speak to it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This property is the former Alec Muir School property. It runs on, has frontage on both Kohler and Simpson Street. The application before council tonight concerns that only the eastern half of the property, which is the property with frontage on Simpson. The request, as the clerk stated, is to rezone to permit a total of eight units. It is recommended for approval, and Mr. McDonald is in attendance tonight on behalf of the applicants.
Welcome to council, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council. I believe Mr. McConnell's report touched on everything nicely. I'd be happy to take any questions that council may have.
Okay. So we have the applicant's representative with us. Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. McDonald, McDonald, McConnell, or the applicant's representative? Start with Counselor Myers.
I have a number of questions, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to start with the planning director, a few of them. I've sent them to him earlier today, so this is not a surprise. I think it shouldn't, it should move quickly because he is prepared to respond. Then I'll be moving into some questions for the applicant, Mr. Mayor. Dawn, this property, as we said, is the former schoolyard. It's about two acres in size, I believe.
That's correct.
Is the entire property currently zoned for single-family residential?
The property is zoned in two halves. The easterly half of the property is zoned R2 or Single Detached Residential, which is the single-family residential zone in town. The western half is zoned R3, which is a low-density residential zoning. You could build single-family there, you could also build semi-detached or townhouse development. The application before council tonight is basically to extend the R3 zoning over to the Simpson Street frontage.
And in that move, then the entire footprint would be the same zoning, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers, that's correct.
So my question around that aspect is, is it commonplace that school properties are historically zoned like this, or is this property a little bit of an anomaly?
Actually, it's quite common to include elementary schools in residential zonings. We have a number of cases like that throughout the community. I think if you check other municipalities, you'll find it's very common. Elementary schools, unlike secondary schools, are considered to be an integral part of the neighborhood, and as such, the zoning in those areas generally matches.
Okay, thank you. This application, as you said, is dealing only with the east portion of the total property facing Simpson. Zone a single-family residential, as we said. To change it to the multiple residential, you alluded to it a moment ago, but can you expand, what are the types of buildings that could be built under that rezoning?
With the proposed zoning, which is R3, you could build a single-family residence, you could build semi-detached development, or you could build a townhouse development. There are also a few other uses that are permitted in that zone, but subject to additional regulations, basically them being that they must be on larger lots. For instance, that includes an elementary school, a daycare facility, church, parks, those kind of uses.
Those all come under R3?
They do, subject to additional regulations beyond what a residential development would require, yes.
Okay. My next question is, recognizing that Simpson Street runs from Queen over Wellington, right, actually up to the driveway of Mount St. Joseph, the former Mount St. Joseph, Ontario Avenue, are there any other properties on Simpson Street that you know of that are zoned with what's being asked for here?
Well, aside from the medical center that's on the corner of Simpson and Queen, and the apartment building on the corner of Simpson and Wellington, all of the other properties with frontage on Simpson Street are single-family residential.
Right, so those ones front, one fronts Wellington, one fronts Queen, but in terms of what fronts Simpson, all of them are zoned R2, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then the report refers to the heritage area adjacent Leo, Upton, McGregor. Are there any properties on those streets with the zoning classification that's being asked for here, the R3?
No, all of those properties would also be zoned R2, single detached.
Okay, thank you. What is the zoning classification, which we've already talked to for the rest of Alec Muir School, I think you said it's R3, but, so, are they, do they have the option of asking for a different zoning again for the balance of the R3 that is the rest of Alec Muir property? And the reason I ask that is, further south on Kohler, we're quite aware that there's, what I'll call, high-rise, I guess it's high-rise, Sault Ste. Rees style, apartment buildings, but they'd be a different zoning again, would they not?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers, that's correct. The apartment buildings, the ones on Kohler that are down closer to Queen Street?
Yes.
Are zoned R4, it's a medium-density residential zone. The rest of the school property, where the building is, actually, where the former school building is, is R3.
Correct.
The applicant or some future owner could come in at any time and apply for a rezoning. It would be up to council at the time to make a decision.
Okay, so that's kind of you, thank you, because you took me where, you took me where I kind of want to go a little bit. If there's to be with the balance of the property, a request to do high-rise, for example, they'd have to come back here and make that request to move from the R3 to R4?
That's correct.
Okay, moving on, the second last question here in the report, it states, Simpson Street is a mature residential neighborhood, part of the Simpson-Leo-Upton-McGregor area. There are a number of homes in this area that have been designated as heritage properties under the Ontario Heritage Act. Suffice it to say, this area is a historical residential neighborhood with a locally significant character that must be protected. That's a direct quote out of the report. I'll add that during Celebrate 100 in 2012, I delivered personally 100-year recognition certificates to more than a few homes on the street and the neighboring streets. So it indeed is mature. This then, for me and the neighbors, begs the question, if it's to be protected, why would planning staff recommend council abandon the existing zoning of single-family and move to the R3?
Mr. Mayor, again, to Counselor Myers, we, planning staff, I mean, we city staff, do agree that the area is a unique historic, historically significant area and should be protected, but that does not mean no new development. In this case, we're not looking at a significant increase in density. It's still a very low-density type of design. The design of the buildings is such that they will not appear to be out of place when compared to the other homes in the area. And staff, the planning staff are recommending this application because it fulfills both the provincial policy requirements of infill development while maintaining, we believe, the architectural characteristics of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Do you, do you recall the resolution I brought forward in February 2015 with Counselor Sheehan at the time, asking you to develop guidelines that would give consideration and protection to these old established residential areas?
Yes, I do. We responded back to that approximately a year ago.
Yeah, you reported back November 23rd, and in that report, you asked that city council approve the recommended approach to heritage conservation relating to the official plan and any new development approvals. Well, that's what we've got here, a new development that we're looking to approve. You go on to say, at present, all development approval applications, such as requests for the official plan amendments, rezonings, or new plans of subdivision, are reviewed by community services and staff on behalf of the municipal heritage committee. Was this application reviewed in that context, Mr. McConnell?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers, as she stated, our practice is to send all new applications to the community services group. They then forwarded this particular application to the municipal heritage committee for comment. We did receive comments from Chris Tossel. They did come in a bit late after our report was completed, but they are on the, they were received last week, and they are included in council's agenda tonight. I thought Mr. Tossel made an excellent point, which is really, you know, the quality and the type of exterior building materials goes a long way to determine how well the development will fit in with the neighborhood. We've spoken with the developer, and he has suggested and agreed with Mr. Tossel to see if, if Mr. Tossel's concerns could be taken into consideration as part of the final design.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, just for the benefit of perhaps the folks in attendance and certainly those watching, could you explain who Mr. Tossel is, Mr. McConnell?
Certainly, Mr. Tossel is an architect. He's a licensed architect. He has a particular expertise in heritage architecture. He's very well-known throughout northern Ontario for his work, and he sits as a member of the municipal heritage committee. In my experience, and I do have a staff member that also sits on the municipal heritage committee, in my experience, the committee looks to Mr. Tossel for comments on applications of this type.
Okay, on the proposed development, there's a number of issues that were concerns raised by the neighbors to both Counselor Hollingsworth and I, and they've been addressed within the report. Items such as buffers with the houses immediately adjacent to the development setbacks in line of the existing properties, types of materials being used, which you just alluded to. Can you please expand on these? I'll start with the issue of buffers with the house that's immediately to the south and immediately to the north.
The interest, well, all of the properties on Simpson Street are quite deep. As a result, they tend to be quite large. They have very large rear yards and front yards. The proposed development will line up on the front yard with the rest of the houses on Simpson Street, so it won't be set back, it won't be set forward, it'll blend into the neighborhood. Specifically to your question, which is, what about the side yards to the houses to the north and south? There is an existing PUC line that runs along the north of the property. The PUC has asked for a five-meter, it's about a 15-foot easement that would be given to them. The developer has agreed, so there'll be about a 15-foot separation between the building and the property line.
On the north end?
From the north end. On the south end, it's four feet, which is pretty much standard for a single-story residential home. In this case, the property owner to the south has asked for a hedge to be constructed along the lot line in addition to the existing trees that are already there, and the developer has agreed to that. We will make that a condition of the site plan agreement.
Okay, thank you. And then the other part of that was the setbacks. I think you started to speak to that about the front, and then the back, how deep they'll go?
The back properties are quite deep, as, you know, if you look at their photo, the proposed development is not out of character with the rest of the properties on the street. They all have quite generous rear yards.
Okay. It was brought up to me about the middle, on the triplexes, how the middle individual homeowner would get their, the lawnmower from the front of their yard to the back. So would they go to the south end of that particular building and go through the easement area, or?
Yeah, this, this is not an unusual type of development in this case, and there's really two common, common ways of dealing with this. One is an easement, just to ensure that you can't put a fence up, or if you do, you have to give your neighbor access through to his backyard as well, because there's really only two properties that won't be able, or two units where they won't be able to walk around and just go into their backyard, or do it through some kind of common maintenance program. So this is not unusual, and that will be resolved as part of the severance.
Okay, and then the types of material being used, I think the report was fairly exhaustive on that, but again, for the benefit of the people watching, and could you please speak to that, the types of materials being used that are as compatible as possible?
I think in their design, they started out with that intent, was to try to fit in with the rest of the neighborhood as much as possible. And as I said, we did hear some concerns from Mr. Tossel with regards to particularly the color of material, and they're more than willing to meet with him to see if further improvements could be made to the design.
Can we actually make that a condition within this? Should council decide to approve this, could, and I have no reason at all to doubt the word of the developer at all, but could that be a condition that they would meet with representative from the municipal heritage committee?
I think you could, you could ask Mr. McDonald that now. We would, we can deal with that from an enforcement viewpoint through the site plan control process.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for you, Mr. McConnell. Thank you very, very much. I appreciate it. I have one question for engineering, and then I'll have a couple of questions for the developer, Mr.?
Sure, for engineering, we have Mr. Elliott here with us, our engineer.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Elliott. Around the issues and concerns related to storm drainage, Mr. Elliott, it appears Around the issues and concerns related to storm drainage, Mr. Elliott, it appears that there'd be, you know, a thought that, it's well-known, or maybe it's not well-known, it's certainly well-known as of tonight, that in 2018 Simpson Street is a street that's going to be reconstructed, and that means a sewer replacement and so on. This, what's being asked for here is eight new hookups. Is there any increased stress on the sewer system? Could you expand why you, in fact, I believe, supported this application from an engineering point of view?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers, we did look at the impact of additional flows from eight units as opposed to the school that was there, and there's no significant impact on additional flows for either the sanitary or the storms. The sewers are sized properly to accommodate a development like this. They are aged and they're in need of replacement, and they'll be replaced in 2018.
So, you don't see that we're in such a precarious situation with the pending replacement that any movement or addition such as this would cause any undue stress? You're comfortable with that, right?
We're comfortable with that, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, then I'll just move on to my questions for the applicant, if I could, please.
Yes, you can. Go ahead.
Mr. McDonald, you're the lucky man.
I apparently am. Thank you.
Is Ralph here? Because I think my questions are more geared towards Russo, but you're representing the developers, so that's okay. You're on the hot seat. Okay. Because my first question is, would you consider building single detached versus semi and triplex? I think that that came out at the public meetings that you held at Quattro with the residents, and we'd like to know the answer to that. Would you consider building a single versus semi and triplex?
Thank you, Counselor Myers. I do, I do believe the owners did discuss this and looked at it, the current housing demand and market conditions. The best use for them for sale would be to go to the duplex, triplex. That's what seems to be selling, and the demand is.
Okay. So, my second part was why, why you wouldn't consider the single, and what you're saying is that you believe the market demand is for the multiple residential that is being proposed.
That's correct.
I think you can appreciate that, while council is only dealing with your application for the Simpson Street side of the property, it feels like we're going a little bit blind here because we don't know what your plan is for the rest of the property, and it's quite significant. Can you give us any idea what's being considered?
Thank you again, Counselor Myers. At this time, no, we can't.
Would you like to expand on that?
There is a feasibility study planned. The first stage of this is to get through the Simpson side, and then the age of the school and the size of the school and the size of the property. It's going to take some time, and at this time, let's, we're focusing on Simpson Street before we get to that.
When do you plan to begin construction, should this be approved?
Provided everything passes at council, the plan is to build permits and break ground in the spring of 2017.
2017. You're aware that Simpson Street is being torn up and reconstructed in 2018, and it's my understanding that there could be some savings as a developer if you waited and aligned the project with the new sewer and so on and so forth for your eight laterals going in. Would you consider holding off on this project until 2018 so that there's one set of disruption?
I wouldn't consider the savings significant. The greater problem would be the coordination and the disruption and the problem of two construction sites running at the same time if they were constructing Simpson. So, the proposal would be is to get in, get the laterals to the property line, get them into the road, and essentially the only loss of cost would be the laterals from property line to the sewers, which the city would be replacing and hooking on.
I guess where the neighbors are going a little bit with that one, if I could, through you, Mr. McDonald, is that when Simpson is going to be reconstructed, if there was not a development there, it could, we know it's a through property. It's a property that you can run through from Kohler to Simpson. And if the development was not there, it would probably provide quite a bit of ease during what's always a very stressful time when a road's being reconstructed for the residents. So, that's why I'm pressing you on this point. It's been one of the key requests that's come forward to Counselor Hollingsworth and I around, could you not hold off so that they can get through the 2018 reconstruction? I think you've answered that. I'm not trying to put you on this. If you have any comments, please, yes.
I think one of the things that we really want to consider and be mindful of is the risk that we run of not being ready at the point to get into the road before the city finishes, or after the city finishes the road job. Obviously, I can't speak for the director of engineering, but they usually don't look kindly on us ripping up a brand-new road to connect services. So, we want to make sure that we're in the, in and out plenty of time.
Okay. And I guess the other part of that, then, do you see where there could still be some friendly opportunity for, I'll call it, a temporary service road of some sort that might be something you're sympathetic to? It's pretty unfair. I don't think you're, John, don't answer that.
Counselor Myers, we're going, yeah, we've got to stay on the planning application.
Okay. So, that's it for my questions, Mr. Mayor. I'll have very brief comments if you want me to make them. No, I can't, but they're very brief.
No, we'll take the rest of the questions. Counselor Shoemaker, I'm just going to jump ahead of you because it's a question that Counselor Myers had, peak something. This is for the planning director, Mr. McConnell. I lived in that neighborhood for a decade and often walked around it. I lived in Upton, and I always was struck by, when I bought my property in Upton, there was a vacant property on Simpson, and as I walked my dog over the years, or the various dogs I had while I lived in that neighborhood, there was a house built on that vacant lot. And I was always struck by the fact that they did a really nice job integrating that new house into a really old neighborhood. Was, was that something the city required? Did the city require that house be constructed in such a way as it was integrated nicely into the neighborhood?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not familiar with exactly that application. I can tell, if I may, though, when somebody just goes in and buys a house, we have very little control over the design of the house other than building code. Here we do. You know, there's an approval process in place, there's site plan control in place, we're working with, you know, with the developer, we're working with the heritage architect. So, in this circumstance, there is a legal control that the city has over what gets built.
And I guess it's not fair. I don't, I don't recall the dress off the top of my head, but I just, I remember that the vacant lot and then the house being there, and the house really integrating well, a brand-new house integrating well into an old neighborhood. So, we could exercise some control in this case, then, on how it's developed so it integrates properly.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. That was the extent of my questions. Counselor Shoemaker?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mine were, my, my one question was sort of along those lines. Mr. McConnell, are you, and Mr. Tonazo, who authored the report, I believe, satisfied, having dealt with the developers over the course of the last however many weeks or months you've been dealing with them, that, that they are intent on keeping the character of the neighborhood as a, as a design aspect of these properties?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, yes, from, from day one, when they first contacted us, I think it was pretty clear that, I mean, they want to do a good job. They want people to think well of them, they want people to buy these units, you know, they want to fit into the course of the neighborhood. I think that was clear from, from day one when we first spoke to them. And I think that was shown again when they came forward and said, "We're very anxious to meet with Mr. Tossel. Any suggestions that he may have would be welcome."
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I, someone, I don't know if it was Mr. McConnell or Counselor Myers, who said that the municipal heritage committee often looks to Mr. Tossel on these issues. I'm on that committee, and I can attest to that. He is certainly well-regarded in the heritage design aspects, and I, as a, as a committee member there, certainly look to him to, to get his expertise on these things. So, I think if they did meet with him, that, that would be excellent, and their willingness to meet with him, I think is well, well-taken, and certainly for me.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? Is there anybody present that's here to speak in opposition to the application? Okay, so we'll just go one, we'll, we'll go one at a time, sir. If you'd like to take the microphone, I don't have your name, but if we can just approach the microphone one at a time and introduce yourself, we could.
I guess I'll go first.
Thank you, sir. For the record, your name is?
Barry Farah.
Okay, Mr. Farah, go ahead.
And pertaining to the house you were mentioning on Simpson Street, the newer one, that was constructed probably five, six, seven years ago?
Yeah, roughly, I would.
Yeah, on the west side, sort of in the middle of the block?
I bought in 2004, and so it was after that. I would say it is on the west side, it was about middle of the block.
It's a nice-looking home, but I have to bring to your attention, there was one mistake with that house. Before that house was built, you could look from the schoolyard, behind Alec Muir Schoolyard, and look down the street, and you could see the doctor's building at the corner of Queen and Simpson. But now, you can't see because the garage of that house is in the way. The garage of that house, maybe they had freedom to do that, but the garage of the house is not built in line with the houses on that street. I think basically all the houses on the street had, were 40 feet from the sidewalk or the street, but now the garage sticks out, just to bring that to your attention. Sometime when you're on Simpson Street, look, go out, stand at Alec Muir and look down the street.
Not quite sure how that would be a problem, but I was just making comment that the house looked nice in the neighborhood.
The house does look nice, but there was one construction, the construction of the garage was not right, in my opinion, in many, many, many of the residents' opinion.
Okay, so, let's, let's just focus on this application, and you can state whatever your objection is, sir.
Yes. My name is Barry Farah. I live at 167 Simpson Street. That's three houses down from, on the south side of Alec Muir, and I've lived there since 1982. In 82, we bought our house on Lower Simpson because of what Simpson Street stands for: character, class, uniqueness, history, and most important, great heritage. The president, the presence of Bishophurst alone implies that. I attended, I attended the open house at Quattro Hotel in September and was disappointed when seeing the plans. The development does not suit Simpson Street at all. Simpson Street in particular, Lower Simpson, has been known for its heritage and class and enduring homes. This development does not adhere, adhere to or portray that standard or character, not at all. Why, why not a full brick or stone facade? The stone or brick which reflects longevity and stateliness would give a much better impression and conform much better with the many classic older homes on Lower Simpson. The development is clearly, to me, unattractive. In fact, the development looks like a dressed-up storage facility or a one-level motel-style unit. In 30 years, my 130, my house will be 130 years old, my house will be, look better than that new development. Actually, looking at the Palmer Hospital, redoing of the Palmer Hospital into condos, so far, that looks good and well conforms into the character and the charm of Simpson I had, I have received the report, the council report from, of Mr. Tonazo, the city, senior city planner, and in there it stated that the provincial policy statement 2014 and current official plan policy support mixed, quotation mark, mixed neighborhoods. That is mixed in what? Incomes, housing-grade levels, et cetera. To me, those that wrote that policy, they probably live in Toronto, they probably live on a street of two and $3 million homes. I don't think they would appreciate this development on their street. They might write one thing for people, but I don't know if they would accept what their laws are trying to put out. And would our developers of this project approve of these triplexes and duplexes on their street? My guess is, no, they would not approve. So, in this case, we want to preserve the heritage and character of our neighborhood. What, what really disappoints me is that the developers want to introduce triplexes and semi-detached units to this historical neighborhood of single detached homes. Why change, or should I say downgrade, this historical neighborhood? How many historical neighborhoods do we have? We want to cut one more out of it? I don't know. One neighbor, I was speaking to a neighbor, this person stated, "I prefer a semi-valued at $175, $170,000 over a big Allworth Street house." I replied, "I prefer the beautiful Allworth Street house here on Simpson Street because that $500,000-plus home from Allworth Street would upgrade our area and increase the value of our homes." The lower-cost, to me, unattractive development would not improve Lower Simpson as much, especially in 20 years when it shows its age. I suggest building four or five, whatever fits in, homes, family, single-family homes that are stately, enduring, with heritage in mind. As per Mr. Tonazo's description of Lower Simpson in his report, council report, homes, Simpson Street homes are with more diverse architecture and is certainly the case in this neighborhood. I am opposed to mixed housing types when you are dealing with historical and unique, unique neighborhoods, unless you want to destroy the heritage and character of that neighborhood. Mr. Tonazo's report showed that the developers only made some minor inexpensive cosmetic changes to possibly, possibly satisfy the people. I repeat, minor cosmetic changes, just not attractive nor conforming enough for me. What about drainage? There is a problem presently with drainage, in particular, in the spring with a river of water coming through 163 and 167 Simpson Street. And this issue has to be addressed. Of the plans given to me by, by Mr. Tonazo and our older women, there are not enough exact details or measurements about, about the project. Already, there is a request to reduce lot size, frontage size, for frontage, frontage depth, and interior side yard setbacks. As per Mr. Tonazo's council report, most neighbors appear to support this approval. My question is, is Mr. Tonazo here tonight?
No, Mr. McConnell, the director of planning is here tonight.
My question is, was Mr. Tonazo at the open house?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, yes, he was.
Yes, okay. I was there, I didn't speak to him, or I didn't know he was who he was. But my impression, after speaking with many people in my neighborhood, was that the people were more against the development as is, especially, especially going by the picture that was given to me by Mr. Tonazo. Mr. Tonazo also stated in his, in his report, "The infrastructure is in poor condition. Lower Simpson will be completely rebuilt in 2018. Why, why not plan and build in conjunction with the street overhaul, or wait until after the street is redone in 2018? Otherwise, you are probably tearing up part of which that was just freshly built the year before. The plans should coincide with or after what is known or done with the old Alec Muir school. Actually, deal with the Alec Muir problem as I see it, then develop the Kohler and Simpson Street under a cohesive plan." Mr. Tonazo, in his report, and I quote, "Suffice to say, this area is a historical residential neighborhood with a locally significant character that must be protected. I wholeheartedly agree, and I hope council agrees with that also." Summarizing my opinions on this development, first of all, I am for the demolition of the old, unusable, basically useless, Alec Muir school. Secondly, I support the development of 188 Kohler on both Kohler and Simpson Streets, if done properly, and in conjunction with each other. On Lower Simpson Street, the developers should build single-family, four or five, whatever fits, four or five single-family homes that are two-level houses, and have at least full frontage, brick or stone, which resounds with character, style, and endurance, and endurance, thus conforming with the homes on Simpson Street. Please, build homes that will, and I stress, conform and preserve the character and heritage of Simpson Street. Please, do not start destroying something that has been a jewel for so long. The city recently celebrated its 100th anniversary. I hope council supports the call to preserve the 100-plus years of history and heritage of the neighborhood of Lower Simpson. We should want this heritage to continue for another 100 years.
Thank you, Mr. Farah. Thank you. Do we have any other individuals in the gallery that would like to speak in opposition of the application?
Mr. Mayor, my name's Steve McGuire. Excuse me, I live on Kohler Street. I am not here to speak in opposition to the application. I am not here to speak in opposition to the application, I'm here to ask a couple of questions and make a couple of comments in that regard. Some people here know my line of work. I've been involved in development and real estate most of my professional life. I think development is generally good, I think the question is, is it good development? In this case, I believe it is good development. I think the developer is responding to market demand. Market demand has changed in the past hundred-plus years to where three thousand square-foot single-family homes in the downtown area under new construction are probably not a demand item, and if they are, they're very few and far between. So first off, I believe the nature of the development on the Simpson Street portion of the property is appropriate, and from all I've heard from Mr. McConnell and his staff in the report, they have put in a number of requests of the developer to improve or to establish that it will fit in with a neighborhood that, as Mr. Farah stated, does have a heritage reality to it, but a hundred years from now, fifty years from now, the nature of the community and the heritage will have changed further, and I believe the developer is addressing that and that the market will also respond to the property that is being proposed. My comment for council, Mr. Mayor, is with regard to the nature of the request, which is to zone the entire property as the property that the school on Kohler Street currently has attached to it, which allows for a medium-density, if that's the correct term, residential expansion development. And I appreciate that this application is only for the Simpson Street portion of that property. The concern going forward that I might have as a budding to that property on Kohler Street is what future development this developer or any other future property owner there might have. I understand that that is not part of this and can't really be discussed at this point. I simply state that I think changing that zoning to anything significantly different might cause a greater response in this chamber in the event that that type of an application comes forward, and I think Ms. Myers, Councilor Myers, addressed that in her comments as well. In general, I certainly do not feel that the development is inappropriate, and I think the developer has proven that he is a good community citizen in that regard, and I think that the properties will be properly built and serviced, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Okay, so, and thank you, Ms. McGuire. Anybody else that wants to speak in opposition, go ahead, if you can introduce yourself for the chamber, please.
Good evening, my name is Andy Boston. I am a resident of 180 Simpson, directly across the street from the proposed development. I, along with many of my neighbors, who may be behind you here and may not be speaking, but are all here, are not in support of this development. This neighborhood was previously the Alec Mir School, and we look forward to a new development on the former site, but we think this proposal has many deficiencies. First off, Agoma District School Board sold the property for $150,000 to Collins Hollage of Sudbury. On the very same day, it resold the property at a $12,500 loss to the numbered company 1890685. That question brings apart the question of the sincerity of the corporations when they immediately took a $12,000 loss on the property to save property taxes. Now, I'd like to finish my, please, may-
No, Mr. Boston, please. I'm going to require you speak to the actual application.
Yeah, this, this is all goes in, goes about to show the property and the heritage so far. Upon the stroke of your pen, of your approval, that's the only part I brought up about the property and the heritage of the property.
Just to be clear, before you continue, Mr. Boston, if you continue to say things that I don't believe are relevant to the application, I'm going to continue to interrupt you. So please, please stay on the application that's before us.
It just deals with the value of the property, that's all we're talking about, that's what that was for.
There is a specific motion before the council on an application for rezoning, where the issue of previous ownership is not relevant to that, the issue of purchase price is not relevant to that.
All right.
I'll allow you to keep on speaking on matters that are relevant to the application. If you diverge from that, I'll interrupt you.
Well, we're going to talk about, my next question or point is that if we rezone the property to commercial zoning for the triplex, triplex, duplex, it immediately increases the value. And so, once we rezone it, someone can sell it, not saying Mr. Russo doesn't proceed with the development, but the property then changes the value and can be sold. And why the application does not question or actually address the facts of severance? We have three different lots and they want to build eight buildings, but no one talks about the size of the lots of the buildings, or no one talks about the size when they develop and sever them. So that was the next question that we wanted to talk about. So before you rezone it, we should talk about the severance of the lots, that doesn't seem to be brought up at all, it's just three lots to making it commercial, commercial, and commercial. So we're changing our residential zone to commercial, and there's no obligation to Mr. Russo to buy or to build this stuff, but if it happens, the economy gets worse in the Sioux, or things go wrong, the property immediately goes for sale as from single-family to commercial.
I'm going to stop you, Mr. Boston, because I think you just said a whole bunch of things there that are incorrect, and I'm just going to ask Mr. McConnell to clarify, because Mr. McConnell, our planning director would be able to set the record straight on those issues, and maybe he'll address the concerns you have and you won't be in opposition anymore, because I don't think your comments are accurate. Mr. McConnell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A bit of clarification, I think it is the applicant's intent to sever the properties. Normally, severance occurs after they're developed. That way, it gives them some leeway when they're pouring foundations and that, if a small variance is needed, it would be approved as part of that severance. As a result of that severance, the neighbors will also get notice of that when they get to that point. With regards to the property being commercial, there is no commercial zoning either on this property now or being proposed or recommended, it's all residential. And the number of units that are being proposed and the form of the units being proposed is the maximum that can be built under the proposed zoning. And that's about it, that's-
So I think a big takeaway is, Mr. Boston, you're talking about commercial zoning, and that's not what's before us here.
Okay.
You understand the point about severance?
I do, yes, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Boston.
We did, I asked to be explained up by Peter, but he wasn't quite available for comment on that. My next question was to talk about, which has been addressed, about the city services and how there's no comment from the PUC about the quality of the water. On my house, I've replaced the water service, but the PUC still continues and tests twice a year because the galvanized and lead pipes that services the street are causing contamination. But that was not addressed in the PUC report, only the electricity was.
But how would that be relevant to the application that's before us?
Because if they're not, they shouldn't be selling, the PUC says they're testing for lead in the water, then they shouldn't be addressing any new building or anything else, we're going to have another flint in our hands if they build new houses with their lead in the water already.
The PUC is testing for that all over the city in accord with its responsibilities, it has nothing to do with this planning application, Mr. Boston.
The next question was the traffic. My biggest concern was there was no report from the traffic department about the eight new driveways on Simpson Street. I mean, and I called to ask about that.
So you can ask Mr. McConnell whether this would be, in normal course, circulated for opinion in that respect, and he can maybe offer some comment?
Mr. Mayor, we're only talking about eight lots here, eight units.
We're not talking about eight lots.
Sorry, eight-
Eight driveways.
Eight driveways. We did circulate, as is our standard practice, to public works for comment, and they did not believe there would be any traffic concerns related to this project.
So the matter was circulated to our-
That's our standard practice, yes, it was, we received that they have no concerns back as a comment.
On the planning report rendition, we got no comment from the traffic department, that's why I read the report, that's why.
Yeah, maybe on a going-forward basis, you can note it, it circulated to traffic, Mr. McConnell.
My last question was for development control. There's two types of provisions a city can use, they can do site plan control and they can do development control. Most of the other previous severances of schools in Ontario have all provided with development control, which means the city would receive an application from a developer which would lay out the exact criteria of the entire property, and not just site plan control, which more or less says, we're going to rezone it, and then the city and the developer are going to get together and make it all happy. Now, I'm just asking that question, is why we didn't impose development control on this property, instead of just site plan?
And I would agree, that's a very relevant question, Mr. Boston. Mr. McConnell, please.
Mr. Mayor, there's, I'm not quite sure where the question is, so there's two possibilities. One is that the reference is actually to a development permit system, which has been tried by some municipalities where basically there's no zoning on the property, and the developer is required to go through a zoning process and sort of develop the rules as you go along. That has been tried by a couple of small municipalities, my understanding is that it hasn't been successful. It is a legal option that is available to the municipality. We do not recommend it because it creates a great sense of uncertainty for all parties involved, whether they be the property owner or the neighbors. We do use development control as permitted by Section 41 of the Planning Act, which is what's more frequently called site plan control. And we do have that in this case, where the developer has presented a plan that says, here's what I'm going to build, more or less. And I say more or less because I think he's pretty solid on what he's going to do, but the details of that will be entered into an agreement between the developer and the city that is enforceable, the city does get financial guarantees, we will deal with matters such as the drainage issues that were discussed, we'll make sure that there are proper landscaping drawings and that the landscaping is all put in place, and that all requirements are met. That's very common, that is what most municipalities use, St. Marie is no different.
So site plan control would be the common mechanism that a municipality would use to deal with a development like this?
That's correct. I do have a concern, because I have three commercial properties all with development control on them. Those are registered on title, and no matter who buys the property, all has to adhere to the development control regulations. So by, I mean, if this developer decides to follow through, or decides that they don't want to, you know, proceed with this development, they can just sell off the property, and then the site plan control is only relevant to this rezoning. The property will be rezoned, and then the next owner doesn't have anything on title that says they have to submit, you know, a detailed plan of what you're going to build, what it's going to look like, and how it's going to contain. Right now, we're just going on the fact that, you know, we like it to be site planned, but that's not restrictive to the government, and it's also not restrictive to the next owner.
We're going to have the director of planning speak to that.
Mr. Mayor, we do register all site plan agreements on title prior to the issuance of a building permit. As I mentioned, we also do receive a financial guarantee prior to the issuance of a building permit. Mr. Boston is correct in the sense that the developer could simply abandon the project, turn around, and sell it to someone else. If they wanted to build something significantly different, they'd be back at council.
The purchaser would be back at council.
The new purchaser would be back.
So that addresses your concern, I think, then, Mr. Boston.
Okay, thank you very much.
Are there any other parties in attendance who would like to speak in opposition to the application?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, councillors and, yeah, aldermen, councillors, and ladies and gentlemen, I'm kind of nervous about this because I've never done this before, and I have a speech here, okay, that I'm written, okay, but-
Could we have your name, sir, for the record?
My name is David German, okay, I reside at 163 Simpson Street, and part of the problem of drainage that Mr. Farah was talking about. Okay, but I, my speech here is, I'm going to have to throw that out because you're going to tell me it's not relevant to the problem, okay?
Well, let's wait and see, I mean-
Well, yeah, I don't want to take it, okay, because it concerns with, first of all, the way the sale of, from the school boards to the present owners occurred, okay, so that's, you've already ruled that out. And my whole problem, okay, was, is the process, okay? And I'm a number man, okay, and I try to find numbers, okay? I don't have the width of these particular buildings, there's no plans of the buildings. All we have is a picture superimposed upon an aerial map, and I don't think that's relevant because there are no distances on there.
Do you want to stop there, sir, maybe we can ask planning if they have those distances or if they have those numbers?
Mr. Mayor, there was a drawing that was provided as part of the application that gives the property size and the location of the buildings that was included with council's report.
Okay, so, and that was published when we publicly released our agenda, just for my clarity, was that type of information provided at the community meeting that the developer held? Do we have an answer to that?
I think it was, perhaps Mr. McDonald could confirm that.
Mr. McDonald, can you please confirm whether the information with specific distances and sizes was provided at the community meeting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it was. Following that, there was a change because of the PUC and the easement, but the building sizes and footprints were provided at the public meeting.
Okay. I'm sorry you don't have that information, sir, I think it's available with our public agenda, so we can certainly get that information to you.
Well, that was, I visited Mr. McDonald there a week ago, okay, a week ago today, okay, in the hopes of getting a site plan, and all that came up was just a picture. I expected to have, see, eight lots with the size of the buildings, the measurements of the buildings as they pertain to the lot lines, okay, these eight lot lines, or the be, that would be eight?
There's three lots, sir.
Yes, I understand, but the point is, okay, that they were to be divided, divided into another two, and then three lots, and three lots.
The lots aren't divided amongst themselves, there's three lots, and they are putting multi-residential buildings on each lot, but it doesn't again then divide the lot.
Well, I understand that the idea was to-
There's two triplexes, as I understand, and a duplex.
They were to be severed, the lots, each lot was going to be severed, one, two into three severances?
No, sir. The severance is to create the three lots, and on one of the lots, they're proposing a triplex, and another lot, they're proposing another triplex, and in the third lot, they're proposing a duplex. So the application before council tonight isn't to create eight lots, it's to create three lots. Mr. McConnell, I welcome you to clarify if I made a mistake in that respect.
Mr. Mayor, the drawing that was presented to council shows how the buildings could be located and the side yard setbacks and that for zoning by law purposes. Perhaps Mr. McDonald could confirm, but I believe it is their intent to eventually sever the properties so that each property could be sold individually to an owner.
And that's not what we're doing-
That's not part of the application before council tonight, that would be a separate application through the committee of adjustment, which the neighbors would receive notice of.
So I think to this gentleman's point, do they have the dimensions in, or have the dimensions of what will be the next step to sever the lots farther down? Have those dimensions been provided?
Yes, they have.
Okay.
Okay, so, we can't talk about that.
No, I mean, you're talking about relevant things, sir, you're asking about the lot sizes.
Well, I just, this is what I expected, because they talked about several, okay, when we were at this meeting, okay, they've made a point of saying, okay, that these were freehold, okay, and not rentals, okay, because at the meeting, okay, the one thing that I overheard was the opposition to rental housing on the property, okay? So they've said, no, these are going to be freehold, and they were going to be severed into these eight, I call them lots, but let's call them severances. So, now, now, I'm Friday, October 21, okay, I'm trying to piece all these things together because I'm a numbers man, okay, and I want to see, okay, the lots sizes, the sizes of the buildings and how they fit into the particular lots. And without any success, until I went down on, I think it was on Friday, I went down and I saw a very nice young lady there, she helped me out, okay, to be able to determine the fact that I was, I was, I was looking for lot sizes, okay, so on the, she pointed out on the council report, okay, there was a page with indeed, okay, the size of the buildings. And if you refer to the report, there's an option five, July 18, 2016, that's the only place where I have any indication of the width of the buildings, okay? And the strange thing about it, okay, is I said, that's really good, I found out that one is, one of these buildings is 28 meters, and the other building is 25 meters. And I said, well, that's kind of different, because I thought they were meant to be the same. But, okay, and I thought, well, that's a pretty good idea, because I believe the whole project is one meter short. project is one meter short in the overall length from along frontage, along Simpson Street, and they've taken off one meter in the semi-detached lot. And then we have a problem with the PUC easement, okay? They need another two meters, okay? So the planning report suggests of reducing the side clearances between the three buildings, okay? So that would give them another two meters. So my point is, okay, here we have 28 meters and 25 meters, okay? Why don't I just reduce the middle one of the 28 meters and make it 25 meters, and then you've got your three meters that you were looking for, rather than changing the regulations? There are three regulations.
Okay, so...
You see what I mean?
I think I understand your question. Mr. McConnell, did you understand the question?
Yes, I did, and it's an excellent question, Mr. Mayor. In fact, there is an error, and we pointed this out to the consultant on the drawing submitted to us. Both buildings are 25 meters wide, not one's 25 and one's 28, which then makes the math correct.
Oh, okay.
You are definitely a numbers man, sir, because you certainly talked about...
Yeah, okay, well, the next thing I look at, I see these two, they don't look anything like the superimposed colored picture that we have, okay? They're just rectangles, okay? But then I see, and this kind of concerns me, okay, because it says R4 zoning, triplex shown, R4 zoning, triplex shown. Now, I understand that this was meant to be R3. So I am, that doesn't seem, that raises alarm bells in my head.
Okay, so can you address that, Mr. McConnell, please?
Again, in this information, sorry, the application was for rezoning to R3. For some reason, one of the conceptual drawing that was submitted made reference to an R4 zone. It's not. It's R3. That was what the application was for, and that's the recommendation from staff.
Okay, so this gentleman's catching all of the errors.
So this is really garbage.
Yeah.
Is that right?
You're identifying mistakes, sir, yeah, very adeptly, so...
Oh, well...
That concerns...
This is a problem because this is coming from the planning department, and I presume, okay, that they know what they're doing.
Well, I think it's fair for you to presume that, and I would agree that we have to be more careful to not send out documents that have errors on them.
Okay, so where do I go from here? I mean, it, things start to, like, things don't look good. And that was my problem with...
Maybe, Mr. McConnell, maybe you can answer this. Is this an issue of not, of this gentleman not having the most recent information?
I looked for this information. I mean, I've been digging for a week.
Yeah, yeah, sir, I'm not, I'm asking for clarification as to why you'd have information...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
I'm asking why you have information that's not accurate, so it appears to be the case.
Mr. Mayor, we'd like to just clarify. The drawing in question came from the consultant, not from city staff.
Okay, there we go.
And yes, there is a reference to R4, and it should be R3, and yes, there's a reference to a 28-meter-wide building, and it should be 25 meters wide, and that has been pointed out to the consultant.
So I apologize to the planning department because you evidently didn't send out incorrect information.
Okay, where's my last little thing here? Oh, I do suggest, okay, one suggestion is, you're going to say this is not, I had an awful trouble trying to find all this information, and I would suggest that the planning department adopt the following requirements, okay? That all lots or proposed severances on application be clearly defined and identified by number. Had to, I thought, to try and identify what was happening in this PUC and the proposed change, okay, was very, very hard to follow. And if we'd had the severances or the lots clearly defined by number and the proposed structures by number or by alphabetically, that would have been a great help. But it just keeps talking about northernness and that, and it's very hard to be able to follow what was being, what was, okay? And then the other thing is, all measurements correct two decimal places, please.
Okay.
One tenth of a meter is?
Four inches.
Four inches, yeah. So, I mean, okay, if you talk about one tenth of a meter and you start adding those up along there, you're getting quite this considerable amount of distance. What else can I say? Because I've had to change, I have this. Yeah, the other thing, okay, we're talking about the lack of building dimensions, that there was only the zoning setbacks, okay, which provides the applicant to build a structure of any size within those limits. Is that, that's all that I was found, okay, on this report, is reference to setbacks. And so, okay, one could build any size building inside those limits.
So your question is, provided that the developer respects the setbacks, they're not limited in any other way? That's your concern?
Yes, they're not limited to whatever they show on those fancy pictures.
I'll ask Mr. McConnell to address that question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's actually a couple of parts to that. In addition to the building setbacks, you can't exceed 40% total lot coverage, and you also can't build a building more than two stories high in that zone. So there are other limitations. Council and the neighbors should take some comfort in the fact that there will be a site plan agreement put into effect if this project is approved, which sets out the size of the buildings, which will be very close to what's in the air photo drawing that's there. We would not, we would allow some modifications, some minor variances to the size of the buildings, obviously, as the final plans are prepared, but it needs to look basically what council has in front of them tonight. So there wouldn't be a, like, there wouldn't be a significant change to what either council or the public has seen.
Okay, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So do we have anybody else here to speak in opposition to the application? Mr. Farah, you want to make a final comment here?
Yeah, quick question. I have a question.
Sure.
It's Barry Farah again. I have a question for Mr. McDonald. Are the developers willing at all to build single-family homes?
I think Counselor Myers asked that question, but Mr. McDonald, if you can just maybe give a yes or no answer?
I didn't get a clear no on that.
I was just, if you could maybe give a yes or no answer to that?
No.
So the answer's no.
Ideally, for Simpson Street, single-family homes are appropriate. Them saying no is a good reason to turn down the application. Thank you.
Anybody else present to speak against the application? Counsel, we've heard, given the applicant an opportunity to speak in favor of it, we've heard a number of objections to it. You've all been given an opportunity to ask your questions. We'll end with some comments, and then we could proceed to a vote if council has no additional issues in the matter. Counselor Myers had asked to make some comments. We'll allow her to do that, and then we'll move around the chamber and conclude. Go ahead, Counselor Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that one thing I do want to say, it's important to note that the developer, Russo Construction, is a developer of excellent repute, and I'm sure that all care and effort would be made to construct the finest semi-tripluses possible, and that every effort would be made for the design to be as compatible as possible with the 100-year-old neighboring properties. I grew up in this neighborhood. I attended Elletmere School. I would love the area to remain unchanged, to remain open property, but I recognize, and I have heard this from the neighbors too, it's an old derelict school, and it's by no means desired to be in the neighborhood. I'm grateful that we do have a developer willing to invest, and we all know that the increase in assessment to be paid by new homeowners is most welcomed anytime, particularly at this time. The issue for the neighbors comes down to wanting to see single-detached homes versus multi-residential because they see a better fit for retaining the feel and the look of the area. As representative of the residents, it's my job to voice their concerns and to stand with them, and for that reason, I will be voting against the application. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? We'll start with Counselor Butland. Counselor Butland?
Yes, very briefly. I took the opportunity to tour the immediate area this morning, and I've been in that area many times, but not as the definite idea in mind. And you can't help but be impressed with some of the individual properties, and in fact, some of the streets. But other streets, they're not heritage necessarily at all. And we talk about heritage neighborhoods, and if that's the indication that that's what these people would like to have, such as taking place in Waterloo and Kamloops and most other major cities have heritage neighborhoods, but that takes involvement by staff, takes involvement by the politicians, but primarily by the neighbors. Is that what you really want? Because if that's what you want, it's going to take some collaboration in working together because just designating it as now, as a heritage neighborhood, so what? What does that buy you? I don't think it buys you absolutely anything at all. And Counselor Myers appropriately, and that's why I said, we've got an empty school. It isn't a pleasant thing to look at, although, with apologies to all the graduates from Elletmere School, it served...
Thank you very much.
It served the people of the area well. But if it's going to remain that way, and it's, would appear it's going to remain that way for a period of time, there's not going to be a lot of infilling in this area. As you drive around, you can't say, well, I can build, we could build a house, we could build a duplex. It's not going to happen. I really don't think that's possible. So this is not, I don't think, a major infringement, although obviously there are people who feel that way. Mr. Russo will provide a good development force. His reputation is unsullied, I'm sure, and I think the more discussions he will have with Mr. McConnell and probably Mr. Tossel would be very helpful to make it fit the aesthetics or satisfy the aesthetic environment of that immediate area. So I will be supporting this application. Thank you.
Any other comments, councilors? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, we can have a vote on the matter? So we read the motion. Does anybody else need the motion read again? All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you, everybody, for attending. Mr. Clerk, can we move on?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we can move to the remainder of the regular agenda. Under Item 7.8.1, Sault Ste. Marie Public Library, we do have some staff and board members of library present. We have a report from the library board and CSD staff on the agenda, and a motion by councilors Nero and Hoopinen, resolved that the report of the Sault Ste. Marie Public Library Board be received and that the recommendation of the board to close the Churchill Branch Library with the intention of pursuing a public library location at the Alexander Henry School site with the establishment at that location of fully accessible and consolidated archives be approved.
Okay, so council, the staff just took essentially the recommendation as kind of, it came, you know, Malcolm, maybe I'll ask you to speak to how it came about on the agenda because you took care of that.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a report of the library board. It does contain a recommendation. The motion that's on the agenda at the moment is the recommendation of the board.
Okay, so we had to start somewhere. So there was a motion before council, so the clerk's office, in a discussion of the agenda review, just thought it was most appropriate that we start there. It's not an endorsement from staff of that recommendation, it's just a recommendation that came from the library board, and we had to have a motion before us to actually debate. So we can start with questions, if you have any questions on this matter, and if there are no questions in the matter, we can have a discussion about it, determine which direction we're going to go in. We do have to make a decision tonight. This is a matter that's been outstanding for quite a while, and the school board really needs to hear back from us without any further delay, and so we certainly, we certainly have to make the decision. So Counselor Nero, we'll start with you.
Mr. Mayor, just at this point, just some clarification on the direction, as you mentioned.
Sir.
We have the report from Community Services in our agenda as well regarding the seniors' center.
Yep.
That ties into this. And we have our, the determination that we have at hand is to make a decision on the East End Library moving to the North location that the library board is suggesting. We're not going to try and tie these two together tonight, are we? The community center decision of that library, Cora, and this move from the East End to Northern Avenue.
Well, they are tied because we need to give, so let me just maybe give you some context here. In discussions with the library board, it became apparent that they needed, you know, more than just some kind of feedback and direction on the number of facilities that council would be agreeable to because, you know, they do occupy city space in the West End Community Center. So in June of this year, I asked some representatives of the library board, and the chair was, and a couple of directors were attendant, and Ms. Roxanne was in attendance, Ms. Reese, and senior city staff to discuss the different options and the different dynamics to determine, you know, how the space would be used relative to what was ultimately decided. So the result of that was city staff wanted to be clear to city council that if a decision was made to vacate the West End Community Center, either in full or in part, that city staff saw a real opportunity to use that space. And, you know, it's important to align, right? So when we're talking about libraries and library space, this doesn't come along very frequently, and city staff was really interested in having that discussion and saying to city council, we've got a challenge with the Steelton Center, and this is a really good opportunity to do some additional programming in the West End of the city. So they wanted to make it clear that if, let's say, if we were going to make a decision that two library branches were the level of service city council was agreeable to, there would be a great opportunity to use that space. So that's why it's on the agenda today. It relates to the decision that we're making.
Yeah. So just to be clear briefly, we, in effect, if councilors choose to not approve the request from the library board this evening on the Churchill Avenue site and agree with our staff to move the seniors' building, could in fact end up with one library tonight.
Well, that is one eventuality. I think it's an unlikely one, but, I mean, theoretically, you could end up with one library tonight.
Yeah, I just need to know, while we're going through a thought process here, that that's what's in front of us tonight. A couple of decisions to make. I'm not saying that's going to happen.
Sure, sure, there's more than one decision to make. I would agree with that assessment.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right.
Counselor Mano?
Would it be possible for us to first address the issue of whether this council sees fit to reduce the level of service and then determine where we move from there? It just seems to me that we're sort of putting the cart before the horse to address what we're doing with which building and how we might backfill if we were to make that. I mean, it almost seems like a foregone conclusion at this point if we're debating this motion without first making the preliminary decision that we are in fact reducing to two libraries.
So this was the motion that came before from the library board. Three physical locations, one location being the Centennial Branch, another location being Northern Avenue, which is the old Alexander Henry, and a third location being the current Western Community Center branch. So that's what they were asking for an endorsement of. So that's what's come to us. So to me, that's why agenda review picked that as the starting point, right? If council isn't agreeable to that proposition, then we would, I would suggest you have to then turn around tonight and say to the library board what we think is the preferable proposition. So I think our thinking was that we had to deal with the, specifically the information they were asking us to do. they were asking us to deal with first, and if, so that really relates to level of service for us. Council Mano, are we comfortable with the three love, three physical locations and the location of those three little physical locations? But because they also need our consent, as I understand, to enter into realty agreements. So in that respect, we do have some, exercise some jurisdiction over where the libraries are. So we wanted to start frankly to give the library board clarity on their request. So that's either acceptable to us if not, but agenda review thought if it isn't, we needed to discuss some other options. And staff was, wanted to be clear to council and give council the information that they saw this as a good opportunity to, to deal with some other issues that they have with respect to seniors' programming and some asset management plans.
Council Shoemaker?
If it's of any assistance, and I don't know when this could, could be proposed, but I just quickly scratched out a motion to deal with it all, I think, together. And I don't know if...
Well, we can give, we can run that at the flagpole and see where you got to, Council Shoemaker.
Just, I mean, it avoids this bifurcated process where we're dealing with one and like Council Nero.
But there is a motion before us, so is your motion amendment of that?
The motion before us, let's see. I guess it would, it would be a very big amendment of that.
Okay. So, so let me just, let me just give you, you know what, if council doesn't mind, if I can give you my thinking on this and what I think of the whole thing. Because to some degree, I think I might have started this and, and way back when. So I had puzzled myself over the Churchill Branch, and I had addressed some of my thoughts to folks that are at the library and on the library board. And I said, you know, it seems to me that, that we have a great Centennial Branch which needs money and needs capital improvements that we don't have the money for. And you have that new branch in the West End. Do we really need this, this, this branch in the East End? So that got, you know, things, I think, moving in somewhat of a direction. The end result is we have a great opportunity right now before us. One of the things we do know, and I welcome the library board and their representatives to correct anything I say that might be incorrect. I've spent some considerable amount of time on this and in talking to them. We, we need space, but we also need money to improve the Centennial Branch that we currently have because it needs the capital. We need space for our archives, and we have a tremendous opportunity with the school board. So we, we are focused on developing community partners, partnerships. The school board's developing a hub. And I can tell you with permission that the school board has a significant, access to a significant amount of resources that they are willing to put into this library. And it would be a substantial investment on the school board's part. So we can have a brand new, looking forward, you know, a very large library space with a brand new archive, which we don't have and we really need. And that would be a significant addition to a community partnership and a community hub, and we play an important role in that. So I strongly believe we should, we should move forward on the Northern Avenue branch. I think that there are a lot of positives, and I think that we would be developing really a great library asset for our community. But if we're there, the question begs the question, do we need to be in the, the West End Community Center at the same time? And staff has been clear, and this was a staff idea, that we've got some challenges with Steelton Center. And we can do much better programming at the West End Community Center and that they would be much better senior programming there. It's much more accessible, there's much more space, and it would be a very positive move. It would also defray the, the significant capital costs that we have to put into the Steelton Center, which is, isn't accessible, is difficult for seniors to use, has very little parking, and it's a building that the city would ultimately be able to invest itself of. I think that's a positive when we can, our city isn't growing, and, and we have to be very mindful here about shrinking our footprint as best we can in a responsible way. And if there are times that we can get rid of old buildings, we should look at doing that. So city staff, and I'll ask Virginia, or I'll ask you to direct your questions to Virginia about this, are really positive about the opportunities. So it, there was some discussion in question, though, doesn't, doesn't a, a library space really work well with seniors' programming? So there seems to be a lot of interest in, in potentially having a small presence or satellite location of the Sioux area libraries in the West End Community Center, much smaller space. And staff thinks that would work great in their programming for both youth and seniors in the West End of the city. So if staff can reclaim thousands of square feet in the West End of the city, staff feels like they can do a lot better programming for youth and for seniors in the West End. So what, what I think is the best result tonight is that we support the community hub. We show support for our library and the good work they do, and they're interested in going in the community hub. We get 10,000 square feet of new library space, a significant investment from the school board in that library space. And we have free up money, which is really important, to put into our Centennial Branch, which really needs the resources. So I think that the best result is for us to say to the library board that we are interested in having, setting a level of service at two main substantial libraries, the Centennial Branch and the Northern Avenue Branch, with the caveat that we want to work with the library board to continue a presence in the West End Community Center. And it could be, we can leave that to staff and to the library board to sort out what type of presence and how much space makes sense. I think it's, staff sees it as a very positive opportunity to program for youth and to program for seniors. So, you know, call it what you want, call it 2.1 or 2.2 or 2.5 libraries. But look, folks, you know, we don't get many opportunities to really try and shuffle the deck a bit and really look at how we're doing things. We've got some really old buildings, and those buildings need money. And when we have the opportunity to divest ourselves of old buildings and to free up capital for really important buildings, like the Centennial Branch, I think we have to do it. And when we have opportunities to work with our community partners and to, to leverage money, and in this case, we have the school board willing to invest significant amount of monies in a library, I think we need to do it. And when we get an opportunity to have a new facility for our community, a brand new library, which is very sizable, which has our archives in it, thank God, finally, we have an archive space, I think we need to do it. So this is a win-win to me, and I think it's a really good opportunity. I'm gonna, I'm gonna just ask Virginia, just to explain to you her thinking and what the opportunities she sees. This is in her portfolio, and she could talk about what she thinks that they can do for seniors and youth in that end of the city, why it's positive. When you hear from her, we can have a discussion about that. But the clerk, kind of knowing we would need some direction tonight, and I, we've actually wrote an amended motion if you're interested in this plan, and we can consider that amended motion. So Virginia, I'd just like you to explain to council some of the things that we've talked about and some of the opportunities that you see if the West End Community Center spaces is reclaimed for city programming.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to city council. This opportunity really represents, it's very exciting to me that we would be able to provide a fully accessible space to our seniors. Right now, the Steelton Senior Center is spread out over four levels, and it makes it really difficult for a lot of our participants to either attend programs, and we're constantly shuffling programs based on who's registering in those classes. So it does pose a lot of challenges. The other significant challenge that we have at that site that we're not going to able, to be able to address is the parking. There's minimal parking. We only have two accessible parking spaces, and a lot of that parking is located in a parking lot across the street. So our seniors are crossing the street, especially in the wintertime, to attend the center. So those are some significant issues. We also have 1.5 million in future capital costs for that location, and that doesn't include elevators for that site to make it accessible. So we'll never have a truly accessible site there. So when the opportunity of the Cora Branch Library and the Northern Community Center came available, I immediately, immediately thought there's so many opportunities that we can have there as far as providing a fully accessible site, parking, and also the opportunity to partner with the library and a number of other local partners, because now we can really expand our programming to the 55-plus. Right now, we do know that the population is aging, and we have a lot of younger seniors that are older adults that are retiring, and we need to really look at how we program to them in our community and what we're offering. The West End is also an area that's under service. Most of the time, the residents in that area do have to come over to John Rhodes and across town to participate. So now we are able to provide programming not only for our seniors, also have, you know, a partnership with the library and a space there, but also look at what we can do for the youth that are in that area that do not have access to transportation. So there's a number of opportunities and possibilities, and I really truly believe that it is an opportunity to create a really vibrant community hub for the West End of our city.
Okay, so Council Mano?
A question for Ms. McLeod. What is the level of engagement or involvement use, for lack of a better term, of our seniors in the seniors' center presently?
We do have quite a few that are attending that, the center, but they are coming from all over the West End as well. So they are traveling from the West End. With moving the center, that we did a radius of three kilometers around the Northern Community Center as well as the current drop-in center, and those two radiuses do intersect. So we're able to take in a lot more seniors and hopefully attract some new people that aren't currently participating in our programs.
Specifically, though, do we have like a way of measuring to say, you know, we get 3,000 people per salon that use this facility? And I'm just trying to get a sense of the Northern Community Center, quite a large site, so if we were going to move the senior center into it, how well will it be used based on how well it is presently used?
Right now, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Mano, we have probably about 40,000 visits. So that's also, some people participate in multiple programs, so we track the number of visits into our programs. Some of those are registered, some of those are drop-ins, so you attend bingo or you come to a knitting class that happen over the course of the year. The Steelton program is a little bit less than what we have at the drop-in center, but I do believe that we'll probably see, you know, that would probably maintain, and we'd probably be able to increase the amount of programming that we're doing to the rest of the community as well at that center.
Thank you. Okay, so we have Council Bruny next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we're, we're basically going around in circles, talking about the senior citizens' complex at the West End, which I'm totally in favor of. We're talking about a library. I thought for tonight's meeting, we were going to be discussing, does the, is Churchill Plaza status quo? Does it move to the Alexander Henry High School or status quo? So in front of us, we have the senior citizens moving to the West End, which is fine. So does that mean the West End Library will be reduced in size?
If, if council goes with that option, yes.
It will be.
To make room for the senior center.
For, to make room for the senior center.
Yeah.
So will the West End Library be completely moved or how small, how, what portion will it be?
City staff and the library board will have to sit down and work out the best way to approach that. We don't, we don't have that.
So that's uncertain right now then for space-wise, for the library and for the senior citizen?
Yeah, that's right.
You, you made a comment regarding if we, if we move to the Alexander High School, we're freeing up money by getting out of the Churchill Plaza.
Well, no, what, if you look at this, the library board's proposals, they, they note that one of the benefits of going down to two branches is that there's resources then, because they had the pros and the cons of all the different options. They gave us five different options. One of the pros of having two branches is that they would have capital to invest in the Centennial Branch, which they don't currently have. And the Centennial Branch requires capital upgrades. So they said if we go with the two-branch option, in their report, it was, if we go with the two-branch option, the Centennial Branch and the Northern Branch. And that's the option that I'm supportive of, but I don't think going with that option precludes them having a presence at the West End Community Center, which was the discussion that we had. So just to make it clear, Council Bruny, the, what's before us is their, their request that we endorse the option that they close Churchill, go to Northern, so then we'd have Centennial, Northern, and the West End Community Center. So that's, that's what you're debating. I was proposing a second, second option, which is what we say to them is, our level of service is going to be two libraries, and that will be Churchill and the Northern Community Center, but, sorry, Centennial, I apologize, Centennial and the Northern Community Center. But we want to have a discussion with the library board about providing library services in this, in the West End Community Center for the seniors.
Or is it yet?
Anybody else? Yeah, anybody else?
So my calculations here, we're saving approximately $50,000. And please, someone correct me if I'm wrong, with the move to go to the high school, the Nor, is it Northern? Is that what you're calling it?
Yeah.
Northern.
Yeah, so I don't think their report indicated as an upside if, if we endorse their request and we, we continue with three, they don't find that additional money for, for the Centennial Branch.
So for the archive room, where are we archiving everything right now? At the main library? Is it scattered?
Well, if I can have somebody from the library board speak to that.
Right, from you, Mr. Mayor, to, sorry, Council Bruny. Right now, what we have is the archives, they are completely full at the Centennial Library, and it's not a consolidated archives. It's really in little rooms where we can find space that we've added shelving to be able to house our archives. And just to make note of it, it, it's not accessible by our community. We have so much in our archives that the public just doesn't know about because of the fact it's not easily accessible.
So to move to the Northern side, a proper archive room will cost approximately $205,000?
It, it's the three rooms for the archives, exactly.
So it'll cost $205,000.
Exactly.
Above everything else that we're moving into the Northern, it's still going to cost us another $205,000, correct?
That, that's what we're negotiating with, with the school board about.
Yeah, I just, but I also want to make clear, like, the school, the school board has a, a significant amount of capital that it's been provided for its hub, that it's willing to invest almost in its entirety, as I understand it, into this space. So these, I can't speak to the numbers because they were put together by the library board, but, you know, there's going to be significant capital improvements that we do not incur the cost of.
So for us to make a decision, why can't we have that information?
It's not our, like, I, I don't, it's not our information, it's not our information. They, they could, if they have it, they could share it with you. I'm just told that there's significant capital improvements they're going to make. I, I don't have all of the details on those costs.
Because the bottom line is, how much is it going to cost the taxpayers?
Well, I think all the budgets are, all, all of the proposals had their budgets. All of them did.
Yeah.
Yes, but, but is the $205,000 included in this archive center?
Just today, we found out that there is additional funds from the Algoma District School Board that they have available, so that we are able to tap into that. So that funding would come out of that.
So maybe this is what, I think this is what Council Bruny might be trying to get at. Correct me if I'm wrong. Does this proposal increase the levy to the taxpayers at all? Are you looking for more money?
No, we're not looking for more money. No.
Was that what you were trying to get at, Council Bruny?
Partially, yes. I'm trying to compare Churchill Plaza expenses, costs, moving into the Northern. I have that, Council Myers. So, but then, then there's the $205,000 for archive room. Is that additional cost?
I, I think the answer was no.
No.
So $380,000 as total for them to operate, the $205,000 is not required then?
It was a one-time cost to build the archives?
It's a one-time cost.
And it doesn't appear that we have to incur it?
No.
We don't have to incur that cost.
We won't.
Okay? And I guess I was doing a comparison with North Bay. North Bay, they have one library, and the Sioux has right now three, correct?
Yes, correct.
For approximately the same budget. Staff-wise, 24 compared to us. To ours is 40.
Yeah.
Yeah. And professional librarians, we have, they have four and we have five?
Yes. Yeah, they do have a lower population than we do, but yes, exactly.
Okay. So if, if Churchill Plaza is closed and then moves to the Northern, what's, do we have a cost of the moving, moving everything?
I do have a cost to the moving.
I didn't see that. Did you report? No, it's okay, take your time, because I didn't think I saw it, but maybe I overlooked it.
It wasn't in this report, it wasn't in a previous report.
Okay.
So the moving from Churchill to the Northern branch was calculated at $15,661.80.
$15,600, okay. Okay, that's it, thanks.
Okay, so going down the list, we have Councilor Hoopanen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question. Will any, will any staff lose, lose their jobs as a result of this, Roxanne?
As a result of the proposal that the library board's putting forward?
Exactly, sorry, I should have put it that way.
No, no, none at all from our, the library board's proposal.
Okay, that's great, that looks, that sounds good. Can I have a comment as well? May I do that now, Mayor?
Let's take care of the questions.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Hoopanen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My apologies, but I'm still at the clarification stage. I, I believe I understood you to say that if we moved the senior center to Cora, there would still be library space, space available?
Well, I was suggesting that, yeah, that you, you could certainly, staff believes, like this is coming from city staff, that having library space in the senior center and in the West End of the city to offer it to youth would be like a satellite or library services, they could still work together in the space, but that wouldn't be like quote-unquote "its own independent library," it would be essentially like a presence or satellite or something, but something that staff would have to work out with the library board.
So, so it's not run by the library board, it's, or it's a programming of the seniors?
It would be, it would be a program that would be run by the library.
So, and, and that's what I, that's where I'm a little bit confused, because the report, Ms. McLeod, that you are providing us, doesn't talk about any library space there, it talks about moving the senior center to the Cora space, that's all it talks about.
And, and to be clear, you could decide just to do that, but I think staff, after some discussions, had determined like that, if it's something that council wants to do to maintain or leave a presence there, it's something that staff could do. But I'll let Ms. McLeod speak to it.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Nero. I do believe that there is a great opportunity there to develop a partnership with the library board. When I did write the report, I spoke with regards to if the Steelton Center moved. Currently at the Steelton Center, we do have a small library area that the seniors do use on a regular basis, so this is a great opportunity to provide that service to the community as a whole. It's a need for the seniors that utilize that site, and having that presence there is still going to allow people to come, take out books, go online, order books, because there is books constantly being moved back and forth from the main branch library down to the Cora branch now, so that presence can be there, and I really do believe it will allow us to better serve the community as a whole.
Thank you, Ms. McLeod. Mr. Mayor, I just find it difficult to try and make a decision on this because I don't know what that means. I understand what Ms. McLeod just explained, but at the end of the day, if, if I theoretically, at the end of this conversation, don't agree to move to the Northern site and decide that, you know what, I think we're good with the Centennial branch and what's at the Cora branch left after we move the seniors building there, uh, program there, I don't know what that is, I don't know what I'm left with. So that's where I'm having difficulty trying to make a decision with everything, because I don't know what, what that means.
Well, here's what you're asking me to make a decision on. The library board wants our approval to, to do, to, to, to get out of Churchill.
I understand that.
Okay, so if, if you're agreeable to that, and that's the first thing we're going to vote on, then, and, and it gets council approval, then that's what they're going to do, and there'll be three libraries, one will be downtown at the Centennial branch, one will be Northern Avenue, and the other will be in the West End Community Center.
Okay, but I would like to know that if I don't agree to move to the Northern branch, and let's say hypothetically that I'm saying, let's not go with the third branch, what do I have left? Do I have the Centennial?
Okay.
And, and I agree to move the seniors to Cora, what am I left with? That's what I don't know, and I think I need that.
So if there's, if, if the first motion doesn't pass, right, I, there would be my proposition, which I can't move from here, but, you know, if I have to get down there to move it, I will, my proposition would be, we have two branches. We have the Northern branch, and we have the Centennial branch. And you know what that looks like?
And what if I think, Mr. Mayor, I think maybe we should have one and a half, and could I accomplish that by going with the Centennial and what's left after we move the seniors program?
Okay, so if the second motion doesn't pass, then, then you, you could certainly try and get down to one and a half if you want.
Well, I could, but I just don't know what that means. I, I would ask for that, but I don't know if that's acceptable to the community, because I don't know what it is.
Well, we're, we're, we're asking you to decide on something tonight that, that is concrete and that you know what it is, right?
I can do that.
Yeah.
It's the other part that's giving me.
I understand, then you, if you're not comfortable with two branches, then you could certainly vote against that. Councilor Mano?
I just want to be clear on, the, the biggest priority, or the number one matter we have to address tonight is to give some direction to our library board as to whether or not we are going to proceed with the Churchill or not moving forward. Is that a fair starting point?
I, I think, I think it's fair to say that big, what we have to do is give direction to our library board, which is why Agenda Review took their recommendation and put that in as the starting motion for you folks, because that's what they asked us to do.
I'm just wondering, though, I think that the, the overarching thing we have to get done is, is give them direction with respect to whether we're proceeding with Churchill as a starting point. Is that not a fair comment?
No, Churchill and Northern, there's two big pieces of information they need tonight. They need to know whether they can close the Churchill, and they need to know whether they can move into Northern, and, and the school board needs to know that immediately.
Immediately. I, I'm wondering, Your Worship, then, if I may table a resolution right now off the floor, simply indicating as follows, that we resolve to give direction to the library board, that we will be closing the Churchill Branch Library effective.
Well, that, I mean, we have a motion before us that we have to deal with, Councilor Mano, so like that, like if you want to amend that motion, you can try and do that, but we, you're proposing an entirely different motion.
I'd like to amend that motion.
Okay.
I'd like to propose to amend to that motion.
Oh, sorry, let me just finish with Councilor Mano. Do you understand my point, Councilor Mano?
I do, I just, I feel that based on the nature of what I'm hearing, the proposal, and, and I've seen, and I was prepared to second Counselor, subject, it's changed now, so I guess I can't offer a second anymore to that. I just, I feel that based on the comments a lot of my fellow counselors have been making, that if we maybe sever this and do it in peace mode, we might get somewhere quicker, and I, I mean, I don't want to interject here where I'm not supposed to, but I'm just wondering if, if we could first off establish, it sounds like most of us are on that particular page, that at least resolves one of the issues, so I mean, if there's no seconder to it, then so be it, and we move forward.
Councilor Schumaker, you have a, a motion to amend the motion before us?
Yes, I do. So I don't know if I should pass it to the clerk or if I should read it myself.
Whatever the clerk wants to do here.
I have to down. My, before, the clerk reads it, there were a bunch of options within the report, and so Option C, which is referred to in, in that resolution, refers to the option that's within the report.
Okay. This would be a motion as follows, resolved that the report of the Sault Ste. Marie Public Library Board dated to 24/10/2016 be received, and that the recommendation of the board, being Option C, to close the Churchill Branch Library and Cora Branch Library and consolidate into a new Northern branch with consolidated, fully accessible archives be approved, but that council requests the library board to maintain an appropriate presence at the Northern Community Center to support the senior youth programming at the Northern Community Center.
And, and, if, if I may.
Before, before we all speak on this, please, let's keep it orderly. Councilor Schumaker, you need a seconder for that. Councilor Mano, okay, Councilor Schumaker, you can speak to it.
Thank you. Option C is in here, it, it shows the, the consolidation basically of, of the current Northern Community Center branch and the Churchill Plaza branch into the former Alexander Henry School. And then there's a request based on the next report that's on here to move the Steelton Center, to maintain a presence at the Northern branch to support the programming there, but that, I would, I would later on seek to amend the motion on the next report from being information to approving the, the.
Let's just stay where we are. Councilor Schumaker, please. You made some serious progress here, let's not, let's not step ahead. So I have, I have a list, council, I have Myers, Fatah, and then Butland.
Okay, I just want to, you said Northern, it's getting confusing because we're calling the Alec Henry site the Northern, and then we're calling the Northern Community Center out on the West End Northern, because it's Northern, so I think we need to be very clear because there was just a bit of confusion in what was just said, so are we dealing with that at the moment, or?
Yeah, so I, I believe the report refers to the, the, the Alexander Henry site as Northern.
Yes.
So let's just call that Northern, and we can call the other site the West End Community Center.
Okay, well.
No? Okay, so, okay, so, yeah, it's the Northern Community Center, that's right, we changed the name. So we're going to leave that.
Let's call it Alexander Henry and Northern for now.
Very good. Okay, so we have Counselor Myers, Counselor Fatah.
Okay.
Well, sorry.
No, I was just.
That wasn't the extent of your question.
No, that was my question, okay. And when I look at the Cora site, excuse me, right now, if I'm reading it correctly, the budget at the moment, through you, Mr. Mayor, to our CEO from the library, is $373,000, is $372,000 and change. So I don't think what we've talked about at all is what would we do with those funds. So we talked about the Churchill branch, those funds, $379,000, would be redirected to the Alec Henry site, I'm going to call it, right?
Exactly.
And there's no increase there, the archival piece, we think, is going to be probably provided through the school board.
Yes.
But then there's the $373,000 that's also in the current budget at the West End Community Center, excuse me, at the, the Cora branch, and we haven't talked about what would happen with those dollars, so through you, Mr. Mayor, what would we be doing with that money? That's a nice chunk of money.
It is a very nice chunk of money, keeping in mind that the Centennial Library needs about 200, 2.5 million dollars in, uh, yeah, so there is a considerable amount of work that needs to be done at that Centennial Library to bring it back up.
Yeah, so where, where, I didn't want to lose that point in here, that we, that we're freeing up $373,000, let's say we, you need 25 to keep a presence there or something, it's still in excess of $350,000 to then redirect downtown. Mr. Mayor, where I'm going here is I want to make sure that's what happens with those funds, I guess. Now, do we do that, or is that library board business, that the funds aren't somehow go somewhere else? I mean, they're library board funds, they're not our funds, we can't use them for potholes, so point being, I think we'd have a commitment that that's where the funds are going to redirect it to, and hopefully they can leverage, we've talked about Fednor earlier tonight, we've talked about NWC, maybe we can leverage more money, but I want a commitment that that's what's going to happen.
But, and, and it is our building, right? So like, at some point, they're going to be.
The Centennial, you mean?
The Centennial is our building, at some point, we're going to be looked to, and we're going to be asked to find the money to put into Centennial to keep it up, so this, like, helps the levy in that respect, and we don't have to go looking for that money in the future to keep Centennial up.
Okay, well, there, and thank you, because I'm impressed on that point, then, so would those funds really go into a reserve marked for? I mean, again, maybe there's direction there, because to your point, perhaps council has a role in there as to how those funds are spent, I don't know if we do or we don't.
Wait, well.
Everything that has to be done at that library is, would have to be done with capital funds, so those funds could go into capital funding, reserve for the library that we could use on an annual basis to improve the library and bring it up to where it should be.
So if there were applications for partner funding of some kind with other levels of government, that's where I'd want to be able to see us take that great big chunk and really leverage it into double or triple.
Exactly, okay.
And I think an important point, Councilor Myers, is they, this library board needs these decisions from us so they can go and budget, so like, they're going to, once we decide level of service, they're going to go away and budget, and that's going to come back to us, and if, if staff have a problem with that budget, or if we have a problem with that budget, we can have those discussions, but they're, they're in a bit of a difficult spot now, because they need to budget, and they're not quite sure what to budget for and how to budget.
Yeah, so another good, gee, you're good at bringing these points up to the, so, so for 2017, that's the budget that they're preparing for right now, correct? This change would not probably take effect until sometime, maybe through the end of the budget year?
Well, the, the Alexander Henry branch isn't, wouldn't be ready for occupation for quite a while, so I'll, I'll let the library board speak to that.
Yeah, so the last time that the library board closed a library, it was about a five-month process, so closing two libraries, if that's, if this is what council decides, and keeping a presence at the, at the Cora Branch Library, or previous Cora Branch Library, it would require, you know, a decent amount of time, so there would be no way that we would be able to start 2017 with two branches closed.
No, the transition would occur through 2017.
Exactly, yeah.
When, when is the Alexander Henry site supposed to be ready for occupancy?
It's supposed to be ready the last time, if I remember correctly, fall of 2018.
Yeah, so we're almost two years, that's two years from right now, that's two years from right now. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll have comments at the end, thank you.
Okay, so we have Counselor Fatah, and then Counselor Butland.
I think one thing that we, we better realize here this evening is that no matter what the Standard and Poor's came up with as far as our, our credit rating, this city is in dire straits, and I, what I'm getting concerned about here is that we're talking about shuffling money around rather than saving money. The issue about the senior center over in Steelton, that's, that's a no-brainer. We should be moving towards shutting that down and doing with it, whether we lease it, whether we sell it, that's, that, as far as I'm concerned, that's a done deal. I'm under the understanding that the Cora Branch Library will continue to exist. Somehow, the two will, will work together, the senior center moving there, and the Cora Branch Library will, will continue to operate from where it currently is. I don't know what kind of cost we're looking at, Mr. Mayor, as far as, you know, making that move, but that is obviously a move that has to be made if we do get rid of the building in Steelton. That's, so we're going to have to deal with that cost, whether there's partition laws involved, whatever. That's something that we, obviously, what we want to see is the continuation of the Cora Branch Library. I want to see, and I'm not here to speak as if I know, as far as the main library on East Street, to me, that, that's a 80,000-square-foot building that has a great deal of potential. I think we should, we should realize that, in, in my opinion, we probably haven't reached its full potential. I think that, being that it's in the east-central part of the city, it should be a focus of our attention when it comes to library services. We should be enhancing that, that, that property, whether it be, however the, the staff would do that, but I think that that building, that main jewel, as far as library's concerned, should be, its full potential, I don't believe, has been realized, and I think we have to understand that in terms of offering library services in Sault Ste. Marie. As far as, it, it should be stated that we do have two post-secondary institutions that have libraries that I've attended to many times, we keep ignoring that fact, but if you want a library atmosphere, we've got that in the far east end of the city and in the north-central part of the city, namely Algoma U and Sioux College, so let's not forget that. Those are colleges that the, that the colleges representatives themselves have said that they are accessible to the general public, and we should keep that in mind. That brings me to the point of Northern Avenue, being that it's about a couple hundred yards from Sioux College. I get the impression that we're looking for a place to store our archives, and this seems to be a location for convenience. We're choosing this location, which is going to be a full, full-fledged elementary school, and, and I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the idea that we're going to operate a library from an elementary school. Now, maybe others may not feel that way, but I think that's something that I think, I tend to believe, strongly believe, that this is a location for convenience. We keep referring to these archives, and that's a good place to store them. Well, we, we can deal with archives in, in a separate issue, it doesn't have to be that Northern Avenue is going to serve two purposes, archives plus it's going to be a library, which I, I don't think is necessarily a good move, and, and I would vote against that location. I think we've got a, a jewel downtown on East Street, we've got the Cora Branch Library, we've got two post-secondary institutions, and as far as I'm concerned, that's the way that we should approach this. Churchill Plaza, that's definitely history, no, no two ways about it. We've got to find ways to cut costs here. We've got to deal with cost-cutting, not with shuffling money from Churchill and shifting it over to Northern Avenue. I think this is the wrong, the wrong intent. Northern Avenue, I, I'm not sure why, I'm getting the impression that majority of council are in favor of the Northern Avenue location. I, I'm definitely not. As I said, we're, we're right next door to Sioux College, those are accessible libraries to the public. the public. I would suggest that the northern branch, Northern Avenue location, will not see the kind of traffic that some of you might suspect. I don't foresee that happening. We don't know that now, I know we don't know that, but I don't foresee that being a successful location for a library, seeing that it's, especially because of the fact that it's, we're trying to work with a elementary school, that that doesn't sit well with me. And again, we're talking about costs that we're gonna incur. I would suggest that we've got four libraries, including our two post-secondaries, and that is sufficient for Sault Ste. Marie. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Fatah. We have Counselor Butler next. Thank you for your patience, Counselor Butler.
Not a problem. I don't have, I'd be happy, don't have a lot to add to this, but Counselor Shoemaker's resolution has crystallized it for me, but I don't know where we are in procedure. I'm tempted to move the question on his resolution.
Well, you can't, I mean, it's been seconded, so I don't have anybody else on the list after you. So once we got through your comments, we were gonna vote on Counselor Shoemaker's resolution, subject to other people's comments. Yeah, okay, so Counselor, we're on Counselor Shoemaker's resolution. That's where we are in the procedure.
Well, I'd be content, I would hope we would go there sooner rather than later. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So Counselor Bruni, you indicated, you have a comment to make about Counselor Shoemaker's resolution?
No, I will partially agree with Counselor Shoemaker's-
We're getting somewhere.
-resolution. Yeah? But, you know, five, six years ago, when I came on council, it was big news that we, we have a West End Community Center. Went to the grand, grand opening, there was a library there, there was a big push for the library, soccer field. Now, I am, I am worried that the library in the West End will be eliminated, or reduced to very minimal. And I don't think that's fair for the West End. People are using it, if you look at the stats here, it's being used as much as the Churchill, and at a cheaper cost. To close the Churchill Plaza, I am in favor. I'm still undecided if we should move it to the Northern Avenue location. But I would like to get, receive some type of confidence from the board, the library board, that the West End will still operate as it is right now. Is that possible because of space is not available? That I don't know. But I thought the city was looking into Phase Three of the community center. I thought that was in the plans, for a new arena, a bigger, an additional soccer field. Would it be prudent of us to wait until, if money's available? Our ratings are fantastic, as was presented tonight, tonight for us. But if we, if we can expand the West End with a new facility for ice, new soccer field, maybe we can put something there for the senior citizens. And I'm all in favor of moving the senior citizen complex from Wellington to the West End area. That's a great location, and they can use it. One of our, as the West End councilors, our calls that we receive in the winter time regarding the facility is, it's not open enough. They wanna use it to walk, they wanna use the field, but because there's no supervision, no city staff, they can't open the doors. This is one way that that facility will be used. But I'm just wondering, are we expanding the West End facility there in the future, in the near future? And the size of the library in the West End? I'm afraid that it's gonna be, you put a vending machine in there.
So Counselor Bruni, on the first point, we have no plans in front of us to expand, expand the Northern Community Center in the near future. I mean, we, we don't have any before us.
Well, there is a Phase Three, apparently, correct?
There is, but you're asking if it's coming in the near term, like, it's-
We don't know that, I know that.
So it's not, we don't have that information. And the library board isn't, like, deciding whether or not they have a West, sorry, continuing on with their branch in the, in the Northern Community Center, we decide that. And what Counselor Shoemaker's motion says is that we're gonna have two branches, being the Centennial and the Alexander Henry location, with a continued presence in the West End Community Center.
I'm not comfortable with the presence.
So then you would vote against his motion?
Well, obviously, I guess, I have to.
So Counselor Myers, any final comments? And then Counselor Mano, you have some final comments, and then we'll call a vote. You have, yeah, you have Counselor Hoopin.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have to talk about the Churchill branch, of course, because it's in Ward Two, and it's something, as I think all council knows, I've been working on and with the residents for a long time. I think that the residents, I know some of them are here tonight, and I think that the residents know, I mean, I've had email from a number that aren't even here tonight, identifying and realizing that, and I think Roxanne, if you certainly, through you, Mr. Mayor, wanna chime in on this, it's not meeting the needs. The Churchill branch today is not meeting the needs. It's costing us a lot of money and not meeting the needs. And the needs today are to do with the accessibility piece, but also with expansion and having programming. There's no question, it's a cozy little place. I enjoy going in there, I've gone in there my, most of my life. I'm gonna stop identifying my age here, but it's a great site. But I think that the point is, we need to look at how we can bring it into today's, meeting the needs of today. And we're not in Chicago, as I always say, we're in Sault Ste. Marie, and in three minutes we can be downtown, and in five minutes we can be up on the hill. I just came back from a week in Toronto, and I was reminded again how it takes an hour to go everywhere, and we are really spoiled. And I love it, that's why I live here. But bottom line is, where are we gonna take our $379,000 that the Churchill branch is costing us now, with lots of issues from leaky roof and increased lease and parking and all kinds of things from Rio Can? And get a state-of-the-art, modern facility, and take our downtown and bring it up? So for myself personally, and I know for the residents here, and I certainly thank them for being painfully waiting through this, probably one of the longest council meetings we've had this year, I think the writing is on the wall, we can all see that. I think that we have to trust that these people, I look at Roxanne and her team who's behind her, they love providing library services. You guys know that, you people who have worked with this staff know. I'm choosing tonight to put my trust and confidence in the library board because I believe that these are people who are experts in their field. They would love to have four libraries in this community, you know? It's unrealistic, we know that. So what is the best thing we can do for the residents of Sault Ste. Marie, and that we can do with the money that we have, because we are not increasing that levy under any circumstances. I think that we'd all agree that. So I see that reluctantly, I think that we're going to move forward. I support the resolution that Counselor Shoemaker has put forward. And again, for me, I look at it, it's the end of an era in terms of Churchill Plaza, but I also am very dissatisfied with what we have at Churchill Plaza right now in terms of meeting our needs, the cost that it's giving us, and where it's gonna go. Because it's not just today, it's where are we gonna be another year, four or five years from now? So that's my comment, Mr. Mayor, sad as it is.
Counselor Hoopin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna say that I, I'm excited about the opportunity that we will be, hopefully, moving forward with the, with the Alexander Henry becoming part of, being a library. I think partnering with the school board is a plus. I think that it would, we would be remiss if we did not take advantage of this offer now. I also would like to thank the mayor and Virginia and the library board for putting so much work into this. After listening to the conversation tonight, I'm clear now on what I'm deciding on, and my decision will be to basically support Counselor Shoemaker's resolution.
Okay, great. So Counselor Mano, you're finishing us up, then we're gonna call for a vote.
I have one question after.
Question, please. Okay, well, that'll be the end of it, because we-
Sure, whatever, after that, I don't care.
Go ahead, Counselor Mano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have a few comments I wanna make. I think, just in response to a few things I've heard, I certainly have been one for always trying to save money, clearly, I think we all are always thinking about that. I don't think we should just treat this as simply a shuffling kind of project, because this is more to it than that. We still have an obligation to maintain a level of service to the community, and certainly our library service is, is one of those services that we are providing to the community, and we wanna provide the best service and give it the best bang for its buck kind of thing. Based on all the comments we've heard and all the reports we've heard in the past with respect to our library, I think Counselor Myers hit the nail on the head with respect to the Churchill branch is currently just missing the mark, and the Centennial, as you indicated earlier, needs a lot of upgrades. And basically, the service we're providing right now can be a lot better. Seems like a very, very good way to put it, and we have the opportunity to do that by doing the shuffling aspect without any great cost, or any cost to the, to our levy which we're concerned with. My concern as a Ward Six city councillor certainly is with respect to the services that are given to the, the Ward Six residents. The library, as Counselor Bruni indicated, in the West End at the Northern Community Center is certainly very well-received. I still, and I may eat these words one day, but I will still support and second Counselor Shoemaker's resolution on the premise that we are to maintain a level of library services at the Northern Community Center and level of programming there of library services.
But that's in the motion.
Yes, that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting after here, is for all those people in Ward Six, while we would be reducing the size of our library footprint at the community center in the West End, the Northern Community Center, we would still be providing services to both youth and seniors, and we'd be, in fact, expanding the level of services. And when you look at the statistics provided to us in our report, we have a senior center, and we can't forget one of the big priorities that we've all, as a council, discussed through campaigns to the present, of a need to really improve the services for the seniors in the community. I see here that within the three-kilometer radius of the present location on Wellington Street, senior center has got 5,700 people, yet within three-kilometer radius of the Northern Community Center on Cora Road, we've got 9,850 residents over 55 years of age. So we'll be able to service more people, we'll still be able to maintain library services, assuming that premise is true. I would definitely support this resolution.
Okay. So Counselor Bruni, we've been on this longer, so can you just answer, ask the question, and then-
Well, first of all, I gotta make one comment to Counselor Romano. It's not just Ward Six that uses the Cora Road library, it's many other people in other wards also.
Sure.
All the way from Ward One, we'll go down there, especially when there's, the soccer facilities are being used. So you said something, Mr. Mayor, it's up to the city to decide if a library will operate out of the West End Community Center.
It's up to us to set the level of, well-
The property?
Yeah, the realty, the number of physical locations they operate from, they determine from that level of service, I believe. So it would be for us to determine whether they operate from that location.
So if you, if you, if the city provides them 1,000 square feet, that's what they operate out of, 1,000 square feet?
Yes.
Correct? It's up to the city to decide.
I-
How big of an operation you have in the West End?
Exactly. Council decides, municipal council decides rent, purchases, library boards cannot rent anything, they cannot purchase a property, they cannot sell a property without council. So the two main powers of council concerning libraries are setting our budget and determining library locations.
So we can't have a library as is right now. In nine months from now, the seniors move down there, the library will not be this size that we have right now, correct?
One, Counselor Bruni, once we pass this motion, if it passes, staff is going to have to come back to us with a report on the timelines and how this would work, and they're gonna have to talk to the library board, because there's a clear recommendation in Counselor Shoemaker's motion that we wanna continue a level of service there. So this is, these aren't the details for us to work out, like, staff's gonna have to come back to us with a report saying, this is what the timeline's gonna look like, this is what we're gonna do, and we would have to approve that afterwards.
I guess I'm, I thought this would, that information should be provided to us now, that what size, but I guess I'm the only one that's wrong on this one, I guess.
Okay.
Thanks, Counselor Butler. Okay, let's move on, then.
Counselor Shoemaker's asked for a recorded vote, so, Mr. Clerk? Pardon me?
Location?
Go ahead.
I'd like to ask-
No, we're not, we're not, we're not continuing with-
As far as costs at the Northern location, is any of that gonna be subsidized by the school board?
Counselor Fatah-
The ongoing costs?
Counselor Fatah, this is, this, we're calling, we're calling the vote. The vote's been called. So it's a recorded vote, Mr. Clerk?
Counselor Butler?
Four.
Counselor Myers?
Four.
Counselor Bruni?
I am four.
Counselor Nero?
Four.
Counselor Romano?
Four.
Counselor Shoemaker?
Four.
Counselor Hoopin?
Four.
Counselor Fatah?
Against.
I beg your pardon, Counselor-
Against, he said against. Against.
Mayor Provenciano?
Four. So I'd like to thank you, Roxanne, and the library board for your patience and for your hard work, and we look forward to going forward from here, and senior staff, including Virginia, will be in touch, and we'll have some conversations, and then this'll come back to council. But you have the clarity and the direction now you need from us, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you very much.
Counselor Fatah's the standing right.
Counselor Fatah will assume the acting mayor role, council. We'll just finish off the library item by having a, voting on the motion to accept the library community plan slash Steelton Senior Center as information.
Counselor Shoemaker, you, you had a comment?
Yes, I'd like to amend the motion to accept it as information.
So you asked him to go ahead and provide what the amendment is?
Please go ahead and provide it, please.
Yes, sorry. So I have an, a proposed amendment to the motion to accept it as information.
Okay, Mr. White, would you like to read the amended motion?
One, two. Mr. Acting Mayor Fatah, once Counselor Myers resumes her seat, we will definitely have quorum. So the motion, Counselor Shoemaker, do you have a second or for this?
I'm not sure anyone's read it, or other than myself.
Okay, I shall read it, and we shall see.
I'm hoping on you.
So motion, my Counselor Shoemaker resolved that the report of the manager of Recreation Culture concerning the library community plan slash Steelton Senior Center be approved, be received, and that council authorized the moving of the Steelton Senior Center to the Northern Community Center. Counselor Myers has indicated her willingness to second.
Okay, Counselor Shoemaker, go ahead.
Yes, I mean, this is just a continuation, I think, of the last motion. We authorized the, the movement of the Cora, or the, I don't know if you'll call it the consolidation, but the, that the library operate out of the Alex Henry Center and out of the Centennial. I think we authorized that on the premise that the Steelton Senior Center would ultimately move into the library, former library area in the Northern Community Center and on Cora Road, or on, I guess it's on Gully Avenue. So this is just to authorize staff to actually make that move.
Anyone that wanna speak against the motion? Okay.
Questions?
No questions, comments? All in favor? Passed?
Wow. Mr. Acting Mayor- Mr. Acting Mayor, members of council, that brings us to the remaining item on the regular agenda. That's the 2017 capital budget. A report of the Chief Financial Officer Treasurer is on the agenda and a motion by Councilors Nero and Hoopinen, Councilor Nero just left the room, I'll use Councilor Myers and Hoopinen, resolved that the report of the Chief Financial Officer Treasurer concerning the 2017 to 2019 capital budget and forecast be received, and that the 2017 capital budget and financing sources is set out in Appendix B and capital from current allocation and projects in Appendix D be approved. The Chief Financial Officer Treasurer has a short presentation to you that she will go through first.
Good evening. Tonight we'll be presenting a brief summary of the 2017 capital budget and a forecast for 2018 and 2019. The capital budget process begins with the city's asset management plan, which was approved by council on February 23, 2015. The asset management plan details what is required to maintain or replace the city's current infrastructure. At the time the plan was presented, the city had a 10-year cumulative infrastructure deficit for roads, sanitary and storm sewers of $544 million. This translates into a funding shortfall of approximately $54 million annually. The next step is prioritizing the projects based on the funding sources available. The capital budget is then prepared based upon the recommended projects and the funding availability. The capital budget is being presented earlier and separate from the operating budget this year, and going forward, we'll be doing the same. This is to provide staff the opportunity to plan and procure the projects earlier and possibly capitalize on potential pricing efficiencies. I apologize for the next slide, it's kind of small to see. The 2017 capital budget is $41.3 million, of which 60% relates to maintaining roads and the infrastructure beneath them. Appendix B of the council report contains a summary of recommended capital projects for 2017. Some of the major projects include sanitary sewer infrastructure upgrades, including the upgrades to the West End Plant and the start of the Bio-Solids Management Facility Project, road construction projects as approved in the five-year plan update on June 27, 2016 of $23.3 million, public works equipment replacement, 1.1 million, Bellevue Park Splash Pad feasibility study, 50,000, official plan update, which is required to be done every five years, which is 50, 250,000, pardon me, the welcome sign carryover of previous funding of 212,000 for a revised project, fire equipment of 320,000, and city building capital maintenance of 6.8 million. The majority of this 6.8 million dollars expense is for the windows and cladding of the civic center. It should be noted that the condition assessment performed by Morrison Herschfield in 2014 recommended that a full panel replacement be performed as soon as feasible, but no later than 2018. Concern expressed regarding the deterioration of the metal cladding panels. The panels exhibited past failures and displayed many indications of compromised support systems. The consultant noted that the panels would continue to degrade until the point at which there would be significant risks as panels falling from the building. Capital from current, which covers small capital projects not included in the asset management plan, is included in Appendix D of the council report and reflects the recommendations for 2017. The $41.3 million in projects are funded through various sources. As can be seen on the graph, grants from other levels of government fund 38% or 15.5 million of the city capital projects and leverage city source funds. The majority of these grants assist in funding capital road projects. For 2017, the city will be issuing approximately $5 million of debt to fund the civic center capital maintenance. Servicing of this debt does not impact the levy as a portion of the annual reserve allocation is redirected to the repayment for the next 15 years. Looking forward to 2018 and 2019, staff is forecasting 48.9 million and 72.5 million of capital requirements respectively. The increase in 2019 reflects a potential relocation of transit at a cost of 18 million. Funding is estimated as two-thirds grant and one-third city sourced. The city share would be met with long-term debt. Servicing of the debt would be in addition to the levy in that year. Both forecast years reflect unfinanced capital requirements. Projects not funded at this point include $500,000 annually for transit equipment, Bellevue Park Splash Pad for 800,000, fire equipment of 868,00210 over the two-year forecast, and the corporate telephone system for 600,000, which is basically gonna be obsolete. Future capital budgets will require additional funding sources to address the shortfalls or reprioritization of the projects will have to occur. The forecast also reflects 2.8 million dollars for building capital maintenance requirements not funded in 2019. With potential changes to city-owned buildings, this number can possibly decrease enough that there will be very little, if any, funding shortfall. Future forecasts will incorporate council's decisions on the various buildings and their use. Staff's report recommends the approval of the capital budget and funding sources for 2017. That concludes the brief presentation of the capital budget. I'll turn this back to the mayor now for questions and comments from council.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any, any questions? I'll ask again, are there any questions? Council Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Michelle. You'd mentioned that the transit reallocation or relocation, rather, is 18 million? Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Council Christian, that's the estimate that we have right now. We include it in the forecast so that we show that there is, we are looking towards other levels of government for grants.
You'd mentioned two-thirds grants. Would that include any of the transit infrastructure funding that Mr. Scott had referenced at our last meeting, or is this separate from that?
The, the transit grants that Mr. Scott referenced at the last meeting, I think, is for the current year, for 2017. I'll turn this to the CAO because I think he knows how the grants are gonna go in the future.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Council Christian. The, Mr. Scott was referring to Phase One under the PTSIF Fund, which the federal government had identified. And so we took opportunities to maximize what funds we had available to bring it up to a $600,000 amount. There are going to be other phases related to this funding program that has been announced by the federal government, and we are looking at those opportunities as being where we go to. We're in the process right now of doing a feasibility study, so that would bring a better understanding of what the cost is, whether it's 18 or not, and where the facility may or may not go, which would also inform what application would be made under those other phases.
Thanks. Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Michelle, I think you said that we are going to borrow $5 million in 2017. We're gonna borrow 5 million, rather. And you said that the servicing of that debt will come from, that's from the existing capital maintenance? Is that, is that correct? Building maintenance? Building capital?
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Council Christian. There is a allocation in our operating budget which goes towards our asset management plan. It's a transfer to reserve, so we'll reduce that allocation to reserve to cover the debt servicing.
Okay. So there's, there's no addition to the levy?
No addition.
Okay. I think that's it for now.
Thank you. Any other questions? Council Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. I guess the, the capital budget seems, through you, sorry, to the, either the CAO or the CFO, it seems to make sense if we look at it without the benefit of the rest of the budget that's gonna come before us in the next, I don't know, three, four weeks, something like that. So I'd, I'd love to, you know, vote in favor of this, but I think if we vote in favor of it, it seems to be that we're approving the capital budget. And I'm just wondering if it can be sort of conditionally approved until the end of budget, you know, so that if we, if we have changes to make during budget season, we don't have to reconsider it.
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Council Shoemaker. Maybe I'll start and then I'll turn it to the CFO Treasurer to, to continue in terms of the logistics of it. The reason that we're asking for capital earlier rather than later in terms of the process is to allow for the opportunities for potentially getting better bids, for being able to manage more in terms of capital programs going forward, et cetera. So that, that was the intent. In terms of the financing, that is a very real interest in terms of by approving here, you're approving that financing component that relates to the, to the levy, which we're saying is gonna be net zero from, over last year. But that will, as you say, not be finalized until the budget, the operating budget is approved. So notwithstanding, I'm not sure we need to be saying conditional per se in terms of this approval. It's approval of the capital budget, which is the total expenditures, but obviously, as part of the operating budget deliberations in about a month's time or six weeks' time, we will be probably having to fiddle with how the financing's being done. But we still need to be able to go out and say, we've got this in terms of our gross expenditures, we'll try and find some other way of dealing with it. And we also could, are not gonna go out for the full amount of the, of the total capital because it's gonna be over a period of time in, in 2016, 2017. So with that, I'll maybe turn to CFO if she has any further comments to add.
Through Mr. Acting Mayor, to Council Shoemaker. If you do look at the schedule included in your council report that lists out all of the capital projects and the amount that the funding sources for each, you'll see the current levy, which the CAO said is the same as the previous year, which is correct, is 7.5 million. So that's what's in your operating budget. There's also reserves that we're utilizing, and some of those reserves also have operating levy implications that we have specific allocations, like we just spoke about, the asset management reserve. So yes, there is implications to it. If you don't approve the capital budget at this point, you, I'd turn to the clerk and maybe suggest an amendment to it because the recommendation does approve the funding sources also, which does lead into the operating budget.
Michelle, I have a question. I just wanted...
Hang on, hang on, Mr. I think the clerk was gonna follow up on that.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Councilor Shoemaker. What you would need to do is move a postponement of, rather than vote on it, and I would presume, you know, the length of postponement is up to you, but you would need to move a second, get a second or for that.
Okay, thank you. That, that makes some sense. I guess, I get where you're coming from, Mr. CAO, but I think, in my view anyways, I think the total capital budget is probably something that may have to be looked at. Not that it will have to be looked at, but it may have to be looked at come, you know, I think you said a month, but this is where I'm gonna see clarification from the clerk. We've got a special council meeting next week, do we not?
That's correct.
And then a meeting on the Monday following?
That's correct.
And are those both budget meetings?
The special meeting on November 3rd is a budget meeting. Yes.
And then the...
I believe November 7th is regular.
And then when's final approval of the budget proposed?
December 5th is our date for final approval of the operating budget.
Well, I'd certainly be prepared to move a postponement of this till December 5th. It looks like Council Fatah will second that from, from my view, but...
Okay, are we gonna have any comments, any comments on it?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. We don't wanna, we don't wanna tie our hands here in terms of, we don't know exactly what the rest of the budget looks like. I think, you know, I said that at the outset, so I don't know that we want to necessarily approve capital spending of upwards of 40 million without a view of what we're spending elsewhere and what our financial position's gonna be.
Mr. Acting Mayor?
Yeah, I'm happy to. So I, I seconded, I seconded the motion when I heard Council Sho, I haven't heard much of the discussion, but I had some concern about approving the capital budget necessarily, and I was a big proponent of pushing the budget back. I think it's fantastic we have the information. I think it's fantastic we have the information before we ultimately get into our larger budget deliberations. And I think we should approve it before the end of the year, which is a huge improvement on how we used to do things and allow staff to tender earlier. I don't think approving it today is gonna give staff any significant jump on tendering because I don't see staff tendering anything in the next month. But I, I think we need to maintain in the current circumstances some agility, and I don't know that we can commit to 40-some-one million dollars tonight when we don't know the overall assessment picture. And let's say if we have an assessment picture which shows a revenue decrease that's significant, we're gonna have to, what's ultimately gonna have to happen is if we wanna go back and look at how we're spending the capital, we'll need a motion to do that procedurally and we'll need to get, we won't bar ourselves from getting back into it. But it just seems to me that if we have a short-term postponement so we can get a better picture, and once we have all the numbers from finance, including our assessment numbers, we'll know what our hole is. And we're gonna have a hole. And it's a question of how big is it? And it just seems to me that we, we shouldn't be, you know, kind of, tonight, without necessity, approving a significant chunk of our spending without actually knowing what that, that hole is. I still am a significant advocate of doing it before the end of the year and doing it early enough so we can tender our street contracts earlier and maybe get them done earlier and get some better prices. So I just, I don't see the need to do it this evening, so that's why I seconded the motion.
Be that as it may, Mr. Mayor, you'll be, Council My...
Council Fatah was interested in seconding it, so you can put his name on it.
Council Fatah will be now be the secondor.
Council Christian, you have a question?
Just to be clear on this then. So if, if we vote for a postponement, in your view, CAO's view, CFO's view, when do you think would we, we would be able to vote on this capital budget? In other words, when will all of these numbers be put together?
We'll have the Treasurer speak to that matter.
Through Mr. Mayor, to Council Christian, the budget, the operating budget itself is scheduled for December 5th, so I would anticipate that would be the time that you would also do this motion.
Do you see, if, if you see an issue with that, please kind of speak to it, Michelle. Do you see an issue with approving the capital budget on December 5th?
No, definitely not. No, that's, it's fine. I, I understand where they're coming from and we were just trying to get a jump on things for efficiency.
And, and you did significantly. Go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, perhaps I'll ask the city engineer to comment. There is a component of the capital budget that would be helpful to us so as to be able to do some of the design work to be ready to go to tender, because notwithstanding delaying in terms of the overall capital budget approvals being postponed until December 5th, there is an element of the budget that relates to us being able to do the preparatory work, the preliminary work to be ready to go out with the tender. So I would ask the city engineer to comment further on that.
Mr. Mayor, usually we retain engineering services in the, in September, October. We will be coming with procurement recommendations for at least two projects at the next meeting. Need to get your engineering going now in order to be able to tender in, in due course in, in February and March. So our recommendation would be that you allow us to proceed with the design when we need outside services. That, that component of the, the percentage of the project is usually 4% or 5%. It's not a huge part of your capital budget, but if we delay design until the wintertime, we'll be way behind the eight ball.
How do we used to do it?
We awarded engineering contracts, Mr. Mayor, in usually September, October. The new procurement bylaw has, we have to go to proposal now for a lot of these projects, so it's taken us a little longer. But I know staff is reviewing proposals this week, and we would come to the next meeting to award at least two projects.
Okay, so, so you, you, you used to essentially kind of do that procurement part without the capital budget being approved?
The capital budget was, was eventually approved before the expenditure of the money, but the engineering component was, was approved usually in, in June or September.
I understand that, but... I understand that, but what I'm suggesting to you is that you did all of those things without, historically, you did all of those things without the capital budget being approved.
Without the final approval of each individual project, yeah. And each project, I might add, Mr. Mayor, each project does come back to council multiple times, right up until the, the contract is tendered, so we would, we would prefer to proceed with the design if at all possible.
So I'm at a bit of a loss as to how you need the capital budget approved this year to do those things that you historically did without approval of the capital budget?
We don't, we don't, Mr. Mayor, we don't need the whole budget approved. We need just a portion of it in order to proceed with the engineering component.
Understood.
Speak, well, just.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think the suggestion I would make here is that we look at historical practice in this transition year for the one-offs that are being described by the city engineer. We can still that way postpone the capital to the December 5th date, and we would come back as we might have done otherwise in the past with those elements that we want to have engineering done.
They would be at the next meeting for our approval?
Two of them will be at the next meeting, yes.
Okay, so we could deal with those when they, when they get to us at the next meeting? Okay, so all in favor of Counselor Shoemaker, who's, Shoemaker's motion is seconded by Counselor Fatah? All in favor? Carried.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that brings us to section eight of the agenda. Our first motion is a motion by Counselors Christian, and I believe it's Counselor Fatah is seconding this motion now. Lottery and gaming pursuit team, whereas the Sault Ste. Marie Lottery and Gaming Pursuit Team was formed in large part to deal with the impending modernization of Ontario Lottery and Gaming located in Sault Ste. Marie, and where City Council approves $750,000 of EDF funding to support the efforts of this group over a three-year period. And whereas the Sault Ste. Marie Lottery and Gaming Pursuit Team has identified a broad range of initiatives relating to the OLG's modernization and the lottery industry in general. And whereas OLG recently announced that their plans to pursue modernization as previously announced is no longer being considered, now therefore be it resolved that council requests that the Sault Ste. Marie Lottery and Gaming Pursuit Team provide a status update at the first council meeting in November. The update should focus on the plans being pursued and explain how the recent OLG announcement impacts the group's scope of work and ultimate goals over the next few years.
Counselor Christian, this is your motion. You wanted to speak to it first.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just quickly, I did say that, that I would state my position on this for the record. When this committee was first struck, it was primarily as the resolution states, it was primarily designed to deal with the impending modernization and potential loss of jobs, et cetera, in the city through the lottery. And since then, it's, it's morphed into more than that, and subsequently, you know, the lottery part of the modernization is off the table. I had once declared a conflict because my wife works for the lottery in Sault Ste. Marie. She's not part of the gaming side, so to me, this no longer constitutes a, a conflict for me. And I'm simply asking that the committee come forward to speak to council, to update us on their plans in light of the fact that the modernization part of the lottery side is no longer on the table. How does that change their focus? Does it change their plans? And quite frankly, reading the August 22nd information, they talk a lot of, a lot of generalities. I'd like to pursue a line of questioning relating to specific targets and ultimate goals. We're investing $750,000. I think it behooves us to dig a little deeply into exactly what the, the outcomes will be. Obviously, the goal is to create jobs and increase profile of lottery in Sault Ste. Marie, but I'm hoping we can get more specifics and also have a, a more concrete schedule for updates on a regular basis.
Any other comments on that, or Counselor Fatah, or Counselor Butler?
I'm just going to make one comment, Mr. Mayor, and that is that I fully expect the, when everything's said and done and, and leading up to the, the meeting in November, I expect, I fully expect to see a reduction in the amount that has been, that has been stated, that has been given for this project. I fully expect a reduction because the, because the rules have changed, their, their mandate has changed. I fully expect that figure to be reduced. And I hope to hear, if not at the next meeting shortly thereafter, I expect to hear a reduced figure.
Understood. Counselor Fatah. Counselor Butler?
Yes, a great resolution unto itself, but I, it fits very well into 8.2, which I put on the table, and the very first one I had on the list was exactly this. So I'm very supportive for a couple of reasons, but it took four years to decide they weren't going to proceed with the modernization or privatization.
Yeah, I, I think we have to be clear about that. They're not proceeding with the privatization of the lottery asset. They still are proceeding with the modernization of their asset.
Okay.
They're not, they're, they canceled the, the tender to a private party, but they're still going to modernize.
Very good. I stand corrected. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. It took four years, and then they decided, we'll proceed with modernization, but not with the, the private entity. They spent $300 million. It's 300 million. I've looked at this three times. I say, I find that hard to believe, but that's a reality. 300 million, so it makes our 750,000 don't seem like a whole lot, but from our perspective, it is a whole lot. So after four years, they said, we're not proceeding. But after four years and 300 million, one would assume that they have made some decisions, some concrete decisions, as, as Counselor Christian has alluded to. And I think it's time that we say, okay, what are they? Share with Sault Ste. Marie. Share with the residents of Sault Ste. Marie. The workers now are somewhat relieved after four years of, of sitting on the edge of their seats and saying, where is this whole thing going? Well, I have a job. Well, I think there's some relief there, but what is the, the next step? We are at the headquarters, and we've always tried to define, what does that really mean for Sault Ste. Marie? There are 21 vice presidents at OLG. 21. I don't know how many we have. I, I do not know. I think that there, there may be a few. So our local group, head by Leo Te- Teaberry is the correct pronunciation. I'm told by Tom Dodds and others that they're doing a tremendous job, and that's good. And their report can come forward, but I think we should go to Greg McKenzie, who is a VP, who's been involved with this modernization for years. Invite them to come along with Leo Teaberry and explain to us, or not explain to us, let's say, here's what we're expecting or anticipating could happen, and what will the impact be for Sault Ste. Marie?
Counselor Butler, can I, I just need some clarity here. Counselor Christian's motion isn't for the OLG to come here.
Okay.
So Counselor Christian's motion is, is, is asking for something decidedly different than what you're suggesting.
Yes, I'm sorry, I guess I'm a bit confusing things, but I'm saying what I would like to see happen beyond.
But just staying on Counselor Christian's motion, you support that?
I'm totally in support of that. And in the interim, well, in the interim, I'll just leave it at that. I, I think it's a great resolution. It's very, very timely. Let's get some specifics. Thanks. And sorry for the confusion.
Counselor Shoemaker?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I spoke to Mr. Teaberry when this motion came out, and I think he's excited to come to council and tell us what he's, my, my sense of our conversation was that he's excited to come to council and explain to us what he's doing and how he intends to move forward. And so I, I think we'll be fortunate to have him. He's very lively personality, so he'll be certainly enthusiastic about the project. I will just say to Counselor Butler's point, I, I saw that $300 million figure that came out. You know, I think that the money that was spent, was spent to come to the decision that the jobs in Sault Ste. Marie are important to our community. And so it may have been a lot of money, but it ultimately resulted, and I think, security for what we've got here. So I, I, I accept that, you know, it probably is a significant sum, but I think in the end, it's going to be a benefit for our city.
One question, Counselor Christian. Your motion has this very specific timeline and date in it. Do we know that Mr. Teaberry's present to, to, to give us a report on that date?
To be quite honest, I don't.
Okay, so just, as long, as long as it's clear that if, if it's, yeah, so is early, the motion really should be as, as early, you know, as it can.
And I drew a date simply because.
You want to see it back?
Really, their goals aren't going to change. There's nothing really to prepare. They just have the information and the risk.
And I, they should have that information. I, I would argue they should be able to present tomorrow if we ask them.
If they're available.
If they're available.
Yeah. Okay, so all in favor? Carried.
Under Agenda Item 8.2, a motion by Counselors Butler and Christian. Be it resolved that council introduce the practice of allocating five to 10 minutes at each council meeting to provide updates to council, and more importantly, the community at large, on initiatives that are pending, ongoing, prospective, and new as being considered by staff, EDC, Innovation Center, and private enterprise. Some possible presentations, status of.
He needs not read all of these.
I'm, I'm satisfied that he not read them all, if counsel's satisfied with that.
So am I as well.
Is the clerk comfortable with not reading all of that?
Exceedingly.
Does anybody see that? That's humor from Malcolm. Okay, so, well, we have the motion before us. Counselor Butler, it's your motion, or you can speak to it first. When you, when you do speak to it, I'd appreciate some clarity as a member of Agenda Review as to like, how you foresee the parties being approached and who you foresee approaching the parties and how you foresee kind of us organizing this as far as the administrative work goes.
I, I do appreciate that. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And I had listed them, all 18 of them, and in no particular order, and there, many of these are in, in flux as we speak. For instance, Teneres, you say, well, it's good, it would be important for them to come and talk to about their immediate situation and their, and their future plans. There's a major plant being built in the southern United States, but you read in the paper, 1,000 people were hired last week to do some further drilling, which was good news. So this kind of information, unknown to all of us as council members, but more importantly to the community. I think people are always saying, Steve, what exactly is council doing? Is there any irons in the fire at all? And I'd like, well, I'd like, more than think that there are, there are. And that's why the last meeting, I brought aviation to the, to the table, and people said, well, that should go directly to EDC. There was a purpose in bringing that forward. After that, Mike Delfry has met with Dan Hollingsworth, has met with Terry Boss, and something's moving forward, we hope, in the aviation sector, which has great potential for Sault Ste. Marie. So we just heard about the, the lottery and gaming. It's something that, yeah, this is good news immediately, but is there more good news on the horizon? So all of, Sioux College and AlGoma University had a great week last week. Tremendous monies for infrastructure. But into specifics, what exactly will that, we know generally from the media what these, the monies are going to be spent for, but what is the environmental building going to really mean? Are we going to attract people from outside? So I think you get the general message. The bottom line is, let's take, five minutes might be a little short, may take 10 minutes, but it's important that we get this information out to the community on a regular basis on important topics that we should know about and don't always know about, but more importantly, the community needs to know about. As far as mechanics, Mr. Mayor, I'd be quite content to say the Agenda Review Committee can so decide. If they say, no, that's not something we would want to not take on, but I'd be more than happy to attempt to assist in this area and invite people to come forward, but also in cooperation with you people.
Yeah, my comment, I think we have to be really careful on how we do it. I'm a little sensitive to the private sector operators. I mean, you know, what could be intended as an invitation could be taken as, you know, not an invitation, as, you know, we're kind of, especially if city council or the mayor writes or city council writes, we want you to come and give us a presentation. Well, not all, not, not everybody might want to. Private sector operators might not be that interested in discussing their operations or their plans, you know, and not, so I, I just think we have to be careful how we approach this and how we ask people to come to council. I think it's more than asking people to come to council, we're offering people an opportunity to come to council. And like, if they don't, you know, if they don't want to come and give a presentation, then, you know, we, we're in no position, I don't think we're in any position to compel anybody, except for the people that we actually fund. We're in a position to compel those people to come to council. But the people that we don't fund, or the organizations or groups that we don't fund, we have to be careful that we're not communicating things in such a way where it seems like we think we have some kind of jurisdiction over them, because we, we really don't.
May I respond?
Yeah.
Yes, I think maybe a formal application from your office, somebody, some of the private firms will say, well, I don't think so. It's not, it's not appropriate. That would be their decision, but I think a simple phone call, say to the, the people at the tech who are doing wondrous things, it's a unique situation, I think, just call them, say, would, would you be interested in coming to council and giving us an update? And I suspect most would say yes. But if, if somebody says, no, we'd rather not, that's fine.
Yeah.
So it's not a, a forcing issue.
Yeah, sure. I think if, if the direction is to, to ask Agenda Review, which would likely happen through the clerk's office, to give people the opportunity to, to present to council, then, you know, I, I don't really see any problem with that approach. Counselor Fatah?
No, no, I just wanted to comment. I think this is a fantastic opportunity, Mr. Mayor. I think what people out there right now are definitely asking us, I'm sure they're asking most of us, and they're asking us, what's going on with SR Steel, for example? And there's not much that we, that we can tell them. And sometimes they, they look at me and say, well, what do you mean that you don't know what's going on? People are looking for transparency, and they're looking for information. And to, and to that point, somebody I made reference the other day, they were saying that every time we watch the MCTV news, it seems like Sault Ste. Marie is never in the news. It's always Subway, North Bay, Thunder Bay, and so on. Sault Ste. Marie is not in the news. If we've got nothing, no news to offer MCTV, then of course, we're not going to hear anything about Sault Ste. Marie. If something like this takes, takes hold, I think this will bring out more things that are actually happening in Sault Ste. Marie, and we're not waiting for that iron in the fire to be completely ready to be put forward. We need to, you know, hear things that are going on. I totally agree with that, Mr. Mayor, and I, and I think, I wouldn't even go as far as suggesting that, you know, the one department that gets paid 1.6 million dollars from taxpayers should be aware of what's going on in terms of job opportunities, in terms of expansion, what's happening at the tech, what's happening at Teneres. These are things that affect people who are working, looking for, who are getting jobs, and it affects the, the economy, it affects the assessment. Why can't this, as an example, just an example, be channeled through the EDC, where they do the legwork? It won't take much, but if we, if we get that, that, get the EDC involved in this, where they come forward, I mean, we, we can't expect Teneres to send somebody here any given night and say, well, would you mind coming here and give us a ten? If the EDC initiates this and then brings it forward, it comes to us through the EDC, I think that's something that is workable. Mr. Mayor?
Any other comments on the motion? You'd have to amend your motion to make that the case, Counselor Butler, so.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
He'd have to amend your motion to make that the case.
Well, I'll clarify with your permission that I've worked with EDC on, they were providing me some of the points on this list.
They're happy to come.
They're happy to come.
Sure. Okay, so can we? Okay, so can we have a vote in the motion then? All in favor? Motion's carried.
Under Agenda Item 8.3, Freezing Non-Union Salaries, motion by Councilors Shoemaker and Fatah. Whereas the city faces annual increases in staff salary costs, and whereas the council of the city of Sault Ste Marie is committed to finding cost savings in these difficult economic times, and whereas the corporation of the city of Sault Ste Marie is anticipating a budget deficit in 2016 and a significant budget shortfall in 2017, now therefore be it resolved that staff be requested to prepare an amendment to Bylaw 20147, the Non-Union Salary Administration Bylaw, which would have the effect of freezing annual non-union general economic salary increases until January 1st, 2018.
Counsel Shoemaker, did you want to speak to the motion first?
Yes, please, thank you. It's no surprise to anyone around this table, certainly, and I don't think it's any surprise to the community, Mr. Mayor, that we have what is expected to be a significant budget deficit. We are in, as a community, economically, I would say, worse shape than, than we have been in a significant period of time, probably worse than, than it was during the Great Recession of 2009, 2010, as it seems to be hitting us in the most devastating way right now. So this is simply a one-year freeze on, on the non-union wages at the city. It's, it's something that's been implemented, I believe, for six years provincially since the recession of 2009, 10, and that those provincial public sector, non-union staff have not got increases for the last six years, and I think it was at least five years federally. So this is, you know, a balancing between the needs of our city, the needs of our budget, and, and sort of recognizing the difficult situation we're currently in.
Thank you, Counsel Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last time this happened, it was what we call raid days, and I was with the EDC as a staff member at the time, and this extended to the EDC. My question is, would that be the case this time?
I don't know who to defer to to answer that question. It doesn't strike me on the face of it that it would be extended to the EDC, but I'll defer to the senior staff.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers, the motion as worded would only apply to corporate staff. It wouldn't apply to the EDC. The EDC aren't governed under the Salary Administration Bylaw.
No, and they have an independent board, so I don't think we're in any position to, to implement that to the EDC. I think their board would have to do that, so I don't see how we have the lawful authority to do that at all.
Well, I could show you the pay stubs. We did it.
Well, they might have just kind of went along, kind of with what the city.
Oh, no. No, no, they didn't go along. They were told. Anyway, who's a different CEO in those days.
Different mayor.
You were the mayor. It was him, he did it. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments on that? Counsel Fatah? Oh, sorry. We'll go to Counsel Fatah, then Counsel Butland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will repeat what I said earlier, that Standard and Poor's report may have said that we, that our economic picture is quite bright, but in fact, it's seriously not. And if we don't start taking action, I think this, this is something that has to be carried further. It has to include all of staff, not just, not just management. It has to include all of staff. My last two years that I worked as a union member for 30 years, I saw a 0% increase for my last two years, and I voted for that because I, I didn't want to go on strike. This is important, Mr. Mayor.
We have, I get that, Counsel Fatah, but you're aware that we have active collective agreements and we can't change the collective agreements. When they come due, we could renegotiate them, but.
Well, they have come due for the last eight or nine years that I've been on council.
And you've been on council for the last eight or nine years.
And for some reason, we're always being told, well, you know, if this goes for arbitration, we're going to lose, so we got to make an offer. Why is that the case, Mr. Mayor?
Well, that's, listen, you're asking me a question that predates my time as mayor, and so I'm in no position to answer it. What I can tell you now is our collective agreements are in place, we have responsibility to respect them, we can't change any of the terms of our collective agreements, you have to negotiate them, and so there's nothing we can do to apply this to unionized staff. It is unlawful to try to apply this to unionized staff.
Just for those individuals that have made comments on this resolution out there, they keep making reference to the fact that we don't need 12 councilors. Okay, that comment keeps coming up.
That's an entirely different conversation, Counsel.
The point being, though, is that we are addressing that, that issue, Mr. Mayor. We are addressing that, that issue.
We are, Counsel Fatah, so, I mean, you started your comments by saying, we, we have to start doing something, and I'd suggest to you that this council for two years has done a lot, including tonight, in deferring capital costs and, and sorry, avoiding capital costs and making decisions on buildings. We have done a lot, Counsel Fatah, so like, if you weren't happy with what was done, what you did or what you were involved in prior, that's fine, but like, a lot's happened here, and I think the city council deserves credit for making some really tough decisions, and I don't know why you continually kind of ignore the tough decisions that were made.
No, I'm not ignoring what we've done, I'm just saying that we have to do more.
Okay, so this is, this motion's before us now. Are there, are there any other comments on it? Counsel Christian? Oh, sorry, Counsel Butland, you had a question. Sorry, apologize.
To Mr. Nero, how many people does it impact in our workforce?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Butland, 127.
Any idea as to how much money, I guess, would be realized if we take this action?
I think Malcolm, the clerk has a more accurate number.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Butland, a freeze for 2017 would result in a savings of $227,395.
Any other questions, Counsel Butland? Okay, Counsel Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I don't think it's lost on any counselor that if you decide to vote for this, it's a tough decision. We certainly know the good work that people do at the city. Sadly, we have to, as a council, keep pecking away at these, any chance we can, as you pointed out, Mr. Mayor, we've, we've made some, some moves in the last couple of years, some tough decisions, this is another one. Sadly, though, that, you know, in the Standard and Poor's report, it indicates that 53% of our operating budget is salary, and most of that is not the people that we're about to vote on here tonight. You've got a lot of union people that, yes, in fact, we approve their, their contracts, but more importantly, you've got fire and police that we have virtually no control over. So, you know, we have to do what we have to do tonight, but the harsh reality is for the community, just to remind you that there's a lot of salaries out there that we have no control over.
Any other comments, council? Counsel Butland?
Yes. I'm having difficulty with this, maybe because of my, my background, and we keep talking about we have to involve our employees, we want to, employee suggestions and continual improvement. So we're going to bring them to the table now, and we just cut your salary by $1,000. Any ideas you can, give us some ideas how you can save some money? I suspect these people are going to be, well, I don't know, reluctant to say, well, look what you've, you've just done to me. Why do you, why are you asking me to participate in this kind of exercise? Is that what you really mean? Is what we do to these people, Counsel Christian points out, fire and police, we have no control over them. The folks at SR and Teneres, particularly Teneres, have been laid off. Will this do them any good? We say, does misery love company? Are we go to the lowest common denominator? Why would we pick out a specific group and say, you people? You people are the, you know, and yes, when I, I was somewhat flabbergasted when I heard $227,000. That's a lot of money. But out of principle, I will vote against it. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Fatah, do you have another comment?
Comment on that, if I may.
Go ahead, but please keep.
The reason I'm going to comment is that I'm going to go back to my comment earlier about the fact, when I voted for a 0% increase over two years, I did that knowing full well that I had a pretty safe job, that I wasn't going to be laid off. We're, Mr. Counsel Butland is making reference to individuals who I would like to suggest have a pretty secure job, all things considered. And we're asking them to take a freeze, and I don't think we're asking a great deal. When he, you're saying voice, he brings up what happens with Marius.
Counsel Fatah, you're not, you're not asking them to take a freeze. You're not asking them to take a freeze. You're telling them they're going to get frozen. I'm just making the distinction, there's, there's, there's a difference. You might have been asked to take a freeze and you voted for it.
Voted, we were asked.
But that's, that's not what you're doing here today.
I'm just trying to say, Mr. Mayor, this is not a tough bill to swallow when, when, when the individuals that we're talking about have a fairly safe job and it's, they're being paid salaries by people that thousands of them have lost their jobs. I can't believe that we're going to compare the two. Reference shouldn't be made to laid off employees.
Okay, so the, you know, I, Counsel Shoemaker knows that, you know, I struggle with this one, with this one too, and I think Counsel Shoemaker struggled with it because him and I had discussed it on a number of occasions, and it was something that he's canvassed before. And I struggle with it because I work with the staff, the non-unionized staff every day, and I think that they care deeply about the city and they work hard. The reason why I support Counsel Shoemaker's motion is I'm really concerned that the reality and the fact of the situation is, is that, as we've pointed out here tonight, the lion's share, the largest cost of our budget is human resource costs. And those human resource costs by contract and by convention increase every year. And our community isn't growing. And our community right now is not only growing, I would suggest it, it is contracting to a degree. And we have a lot of people that are on fixed incomes, we have a lot of seniors, we have a lot of underemployed people right now, and I don't think City Hall can be insulated from the challenges that are in the community. And my concern is that our spending, because of our human resource cost, is going to outpace our ability to pay for it. There is a threshold where you simply can't raise taxes anymore without creating hardship, and we have to be conscientious of that threshold because when you hit it, something occurs. And we're seeing this in other municipalities across the province. You're seeing significant municipal layoffs in cities that are growing, in cities like Ottawa, and in cities in southern Ontario, and I don't want to see those here. So we have to, and part of the issue is getting ahead of them and finding solutions. And my expectation and my hope is that those solutions come from city staff because when it's left to us as the governance of the body, we have to operate from the 5,000 and 10,000 foot level, which is an example of Counsel Shoemaker's motion. It's not, you know, a precise process whereby we could save money, it's a blanket policy motion saying, well, we're going to freeze this or you're going to reduce your budget. And when it's left to us, those are the kind of things that we're going to see. My strong feeling is, is that city staff is very capable, and if they put their minds to it, they can assist us in reducing our human resource spending. But to me, it's a must, it's critical. And as our community, if our community isn't growing, our municipal bureaucracy shouldn't be growing. Now, we made, I think, some really good decisions in the last couple of years to address that and deal with that, but we, we have to confront in a very serious way our escalating human resource costs. And although I have a difficult time supporting this motion, I think in spirit, it is kind of going in that direction. And we led, although it was very inconsequential, we froze our own salaries, and I don't think you can go to, I think you have more credibility when you go to the other parts of the human resource base to try and talk to them about the challenges in the community if, if you treat them all equally. Now, we cannot continue to freeze non-union staff and continue to allow the union staff to increase in wages because then you get compression, and then you have a significant problem when you have, that you have to address that and you have to make monetary adjustments. Counsel Shoemaker, that would essentially catch you up and push you past where you're at before. So, you know, we really need all of our staff and not just our senior staff to assist us in, in addressing the challenges that we face. And in lieu of that, and if that doesn't occur, you know, I think the, the consequences will be challenging, even more challenging. In that spirit, it's why I support Counsel Shoemaker's motion, and I know it was tough to bring, but appreciate the leadership from him in bringing it. Counsel Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think there's anybody around this table that's happy about this, but I do support it. There's, I've been here for nine and a half years, and I hope by now, I think, the staff that work with me extensively know the respect I have for them. So this is not in any way to be interpreted as council having a lack of respect in any way for our staff. However, I actually have had a recent conversation with one of our senior staff who said, you know what, I get it, I understand, and I'm quite willing to accept that. It's not something they're voting on, Counsel Fatah, but I think our staff get it. They live here, their friends and relatives live here, they see the struggles going on in this community, they're not obtuse, they get it. And I thank them in advance for the cooperation and understanding of where we're at. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Recorded vote, Counsel Shoemaker, Counsel Nero, you have a comment? Go ahead.
Very briefly, I don't want to get repetitive. I just wanted to say, it, it isn't an easy decision. I, I worked in the private sector all my life, I've experienced wage freezes, they're not nice, we live with them, experienced spending freezes, experienced hiring freezes, senior management teams understand those, it's a tough pill to swallow, but it, these are, these are times when we are pretty much forced to do it. We have to look at everything, we can't leave anything unlooked at. It is a temporary thing, and, and I, again, it's tough, but I think it's a move we have to make.
Okay, recorded vote was asked for. Counsel, Mr. Clerk?
Counselor Fatah?
Four.
Counselor Christian?
Four.
Counselor Hoopinen?
Four.
Counselor Shoemaker?
Four.
Counselor Romano?
Four.
Counselor Nero?
Four.
Counselor Bruni?
Four.
Counselor Myers?
Four.
Counselor Butland?
Against.
Mayor Provinciano?
Four.
Motion passes.
Last motion on our agenda, do we need the, well, it's short, we'll have the clerk read this one.
It's 8.4 Public Works Third Party Review, a motion by Counselors Shoemaker and Fatah. Whereas Public Works represents a quarter of the city's entire budget, and whereas the council of the city of Sault Ste Marie must determine how to most effectively deliver services, and whereas the council of the city of Sault Ste Marie is committed to finding cost savings in the delivery of services in order to maintain a level of service that residents deem appropriate, and whereas the recently adopted vision for the corporation of the city of Sault Ste Marie is to be the leading innovative, dynamic and efficient municipal corporation in the province of Ontario, now therefore be it resolved that the Public Works Department be directed to hire an independent consultant to report to council on potential savings in the Public Works Department before deliberations for the 2018 budget to ensure that Sault Ste Marie taxpayer dollars are being maximized by making the city a leader in the delivery of municipal services with funding to be sourced from the existing Public Works budget.
Counsel Shoemaker?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You touched on my comments in your last remarks about, about the non-union salary freeze that I was going to reference with respect to this motion. Simply put, I mean, our, our, there reaches a tipping point.
Simply put, I mean, our, our, there reaches a tipping point, as you said, you know, where our spending becomes so high that we can't simply resolve the, the spending issue by raising taxes, because that creates a burden on the entire community. Many will recall that I brought a motion similar, but somewhat different than this, back last year, where I suggested that a committee of councillors get together and do this work themselves, and that was in response to what I perceived would be some pushback on hiring an outside consultant. So, I tried that route, it didn't get a second, or. Now, this route, I think, is, is a reasonable way to go. I certainly appreciate the efforts the Public Works Commissioner made last year to bring down his budget, they were, they were successful, but I think this year, you know, we're facing a more significant fiscal issue than we were last year, and, and it's just going to be exacerbated in, in years to follow. I realize this is for 2018, that the, that the implementations would be brought to, or that the recommendations would be brought to us. But, you know, we, we simply have to understand the trend here. Public Works is 25% of our budget, and we've tackled other enormous aspects of our budget. We, we realigned our emergency services, I understand that the Police Services Board is looking at significant changes through, through a consultant as well. In fact, we've, you know, our, our, our senior management team has been totally realigned, and we've gotten out of the daycare business. You know, these are all really big decisions, really tough decisions, that represent big portions of the budget, and the Public Works Division is, is a huge portion of our budget, 25% of our overall city spending. So, I think it is a necessary place that we're going to have to look if we expect to reap any savings or, or offset any future increases to the municipal taxpayer. And so I hope that this will be supported. I, I think, you know, as everyone said in the last motion, it's, it's certainly not a desirable position to be in, to have to bring in people to look at these costs and show us, you know, where we can find efficiencies, or what services we might be able to deliver differently, or not deliver, whatever the case might be. But I, I, I think unfortunately, that's where we're at, communities' economic health at this time.
Okay, so we have a list going here, I have Counsel Bruni first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, I totally understand where Counselor Shoemaker is, is going with this, but I will not be supporting this third-party consulting review. And what I would like to see is, I would like to see city, senior staff from the, from the PWT Division have roundtable conversations with their staff, discussing ideas on how and where savings can occur. Our city has been expanding, and our service has been basically the same or better, with less amount of, of staff working. We just saved ourselves $227,000 on freezing the wages of, of our non-unionized staff, but we're going to go and spend 300, $200,000 to $300,000 on a third-party review. I'm not going to vote for this. I think we should give our experts a chance to sit down and speak to our, our senior staff in, in, in Public Works, to come up with ideas, cost savings, et cetera. If that doesn't work, then I would say, okay, let's go to the third-party consultant. But I'm not going to spend, I will not vote for it if we're going to spend 200,000 to 300,000 for this review. I think we have to give our experts, which is our staff, a chance to come back to us. And I think that's important. Thanks.
Okay, so, Counsel Shoemaker, I have a list going here. Is the issue you're going to raise just with the cost of the review, or the expense of the review? Do we have a number on that, Counsel Bruni?
We don't have a number, but Ms. Counsel Shoemaker has mentioned another board that has gone out for consulting services.
Police services?
And we know what the cost is on that, or I've heard what the cost is. Well, Public Works budget is a lot bigger, so it has to be a lot more.
Oh, I would.
Well, please don't comment, because we shouldn't be commenting, because we don't know. We don't know that.
Yeah, I know, but you put a number on it, so just to be careful, like, we don't know. So, so you put a number of, in 200,000 to 300,000, I don't think that we know it would be 200,000 to 300,000. So, Counsel Hoopinen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate where Counsel Shoemaker is coming from, however, I will not be supporting this. The reason being, last year, Commissioner Girardi, he did a, an outstanding budget, budget review for us. He was probably one of the few departments that actually saved anything significant. So, when I read this, I was kind of set back, thinking, why are we hiring somebody to come out and take a look at what they're doing at Public Works, when I think, I think they're doing a great job? I mean, we sat here and he went through it line by line. So, I'm quite comfortable with what they're doing, and again, we'll be looking at the budget again this year and questioning Commissioner Girardi, so I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, no, I, I don't want to spend any money on a consultant. I just said to Counsel Bruni, he must have read my notes, but I did write them yesterday, so. I won't be writing, expending any money on a consultant until I'm convinced that our senior staff are unable to find ways of reducing the cost of operations. I do understand the intent of the resolution, I spoke with Counsel Shoemaker about it. It's for a third-party to undertake a review, however, my fear is that they would dictate where services ought to be cut or provided by someone who's not a city employee. In my almost 10 years on council, I've seen a dramatic change in the PWT operations to a very much customer-centered delivery of the services that are most critical to our ratepayers. I'm very reluctant to move away from that to any great degree, as I just don't think the pride of delivery of services would be there. I'd like to see a special task group undertake a review, using the expertise we already are paying for, and that being within our senior staff. Our CAO, CFO, deputy CAO, HR, legal team have the most handle on what and where we can continue to look for opportunities to reduce costs or increase revenue. I have all confidence that our senior staff team could put together a task force, go at this, and bring back at even greater improvements. I also often hear it said, well, all they do is come back and say, you got to cut services. And I remind everyone, we are a service organization, that is what we do. We deliver services, yeah, with our HR. That's it, that's what we do. And for a ward city councillor, I'll tell you, this is the wind beneath my wings. The PWT, no offense to my engineering, or finance, or legal friends, or anybody else, and Nula's acknowledging him as she should. For a ward councillor, how many times do we call or contact PWT? Certainly, it's, it can be daily, it's certainly multiple weekly. These are the core services that our citizens want, that are delivered by PWT. I could get into all kinds of degrees on this with information I've gathered from HR, I've gathered from our CFO, and I'm not going to go down all that road, because I don't think I need to. But quite frankly, the minimal increase that there has been in that budget has been because of the costs that are beyond our control, of sand, salt, asphalt, fuel, materials that are part of delivering PWT. If we want to go out and get our own sand pit, and save some money, and sell it to other people and use it ourselves, I mean, you can look for some creative solutions, if that's what you want to do, but in the end, we deliver services, I want to have control over direct services. If I have a private operator who tonight did not remove the snow in the storm, I can't get a hold of that private operator. What leverage does our CAO, deputy CAO have? But if it's his staff out on that, you know, crew, by midnight, that can be resolved. So, that's where I'm coming from in terms of the core of our operation, so I will not be supporting this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel Romano? I have you, Counsel Butland. Yeah, I have you too. Counsel Romano?
I, I just pointed out to Counsel Shoemaker that I, I saw some genius in this resolution. Last year, he brought forward the resolution and couldn't get a second, or, and now we're probably all going to defer to what was requested last year. I quite frankly think there's merit in, in a review. At the same rate, and I don't want to repeat whatever one else has said, if there's no way for us to quantify what the dollar figure is going to be for retaining a consultant, I certainly would not be in favor of hiring one, especially without having any knowledge as to what the cost would be of that consultant. I am certainly not opposed to the idea of reviewing the department, but I, I think when we look at the department and we look at the way the resolution is presently framed, I quite frankly think that what was proposed a year ago is, is more in line with what we, we are looking at right now. I think to, to, the way this is framed today, and I will say that I wasn't present at the outset of the meeting last year when this issue first came up, but the way this is presently framed, it really is calling upon our PWT department to see additional savings, or to find additional savings in that budget. And quite frankly, the greatest difficulty I have with that is, last year, we called upon our staff and all of our departments to look for savings, and there wasn't any one department that came up with more savings than PWT, and I think the total was $259,000. 267, was it somewhere around there, last year? Oh, wow, my math is way off. I must have been looking at one segment of it. But that's kind of the, the difficulty I have, is that there was already tremendous savings last year, and while I'm not suggesting that means that there isn't any greater savings, I think part of what we discussed in the last resolution, and part of the concern we have, is that we've had these year-over-year salary increases without any performance attached to it, and now here we are in, in the one department that saw, that really responded to last year's query the most, and we're, and we're going against that department again and saying, hey, we want a consultant to now come in and review what you're doing. I'm not in favor of that, not only from the financial perspective, but for that reason, I think we need to put our faith in our staff, and, and as a, as an option of last resort, perhaps we look at that. At the end of the day, we're all beating around this one issue, and it's the same issue we all know what we're talking about, is privatization. I agree with Counsel Myers' comments, I don't think privatization in certain areas is going to give us the services that we are after, and in certain areas it may. I'm not suggesting it wouldn't. I think it's something that, within our, our staff, I think that could be examined, perhaps a report can come back to us laying that out, but I'm not prepared to go to the extent of a consultant. And if ever this is to be raised again, I would really like to know the cost of what we're going to be talking about.
So, we have Counsel Butland.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. By the way, I owe Counsel Hollingsworth an apology, she's not here, she sent me some speaking notes on her behalf with 18 minutes, so everybody, please say that I said whatever she was going to say, very much in favor. Any rate. Hi, Sandra. Thank you. I was feeling very alone, and no doubt will be very unpopular with the decision I just made about 10 minutes ago. I appreciate that, and I thought I might be standing alone on this one as well, thinking that people will go with the third-party review of Public Works. But I'm happy that council, for the most part, would appear, say, no, we're not going there. What I'm suggesting is, there's enough bad news, we shouldn't be the purveyors of bad news, and I know we're in a critical situation here, but if we are preoccupied with cut, 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 and the community is declining in population, and it's doom and gloom, we should not be the purveyors of that. If at all possible, we should be saying, you know what, we're working on a lot of things here, and there's potential, and this community have every faith, it will do well in the immediate future and the near future. And so, I'm very pleased, this is privatization by the back door, and if we want to be leading, innovative, dynamic, and efficient municipal corporation, well, a consultant shouldn't tell you that, we should be telling ourselves that in consultation with staff. So, I think, I'm glad where this old little problem, like, oh, things are bad enough, let's, let's not make them any worse than they are, like cliches, but misery loves company, let's not join them, folks. Let's be perpetrators of positive, if at all possible, and beyond, and preoccupied with cut, 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 let's go elsewhere. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Nero? And we're not going around the horn twice on this, so like, you got to get out what you got to get out this time, everybody. So, Counsel Nero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm not going to support the resolution as well. And basically, you know, for all the reasons that were already stated, my reason that I didn't hear was, if we're going to look at city expenditures, I'm not going to single out one department. Mr. Mr. Girardi's department is a big department, there are other departments that are just as expensive. If we're going to do a review of expenditures and bring in third-party, then let's look at the whole organization. I'm not just going to look at one. But, you know, I think, if you think back, a meeting, I don't know, a month and a half ago, I expressed my concern about the financial situation that we would be in, this budget, not to expect great things to happen by the end of the year, the fact that we would be spending all our surpluses by, by January. And I said, if we had a plan, if we could have seen a plan, I think would have prevented some of these resolutions that we're bringing out today. You know, we're, we're into November now, and I, I still haven't heard anything. I know, Mr. Mayor, that you said at that meeting that staff was working on something. I think that if that information had come to us, it would have prevented some of these kinds of resolutions to, to, to come to the table. And, you know, I, I don't want to be working on a budget that's, that's weeks away, making these decisions, and still, I, I don't know if there are any numbers and savings that staff has been working on and maybe just hasn't brought to us yet, and it's saving for that first budget meeting. I hope not, because I would have liked to prepare myself with some of that news before we got to that point. So, no, I can't, I'm not going to support this, and basically, the, the big reason is because we're going to do something like this, it should be citywide, and number two, I hope that this plan, if it's out there, the staff, that it comes pretty soon, so we don't have to plug into these. Thank you.
Counsel Christian?
Mr. Mayor, you can thank Counsel Nero for stealing the exact points I was going to use. I think, yeah, well, you know. I, I, I think, I think Counsel Nero should be happy to know that I support his thoughts.
Great.
I do, I.
I thought that was the end.
I, I think the idea is a good one, except that I think it's, it's, believe it or not, I think it's too early, and it's to the point that Counsel Nero made, and that is that you've been pushing for a citywide staff input to look at improvements, and that's what it's come to. I think we need to start there first, and, you know, I think it's been made very clear that we're serious about getting serious about cutting, or at least looking at efficiencies. And I think we need to do that, but we need to do that internally. And I agree, you, you don't, you don't look at one department in isolation. If, if the problem is so grave as, as I believe it is, and it was properly articulated, then you don't look at one department in isolation, because that department interfaces with other departments, they're intertwined, so you need to look at the whole organization. If we ever get to a third-party view, it has to be a review of the entire organization, and how each component fits and interacts with each other. We need to get this employee input component in place. I hear anecdotally all the time that there's waste, I know that senior department heads will say, no, we're cutting, we're cutting, we're doing what we can. The reality is, people with their boots on the ground are the ones that know where to save the money. So, let's not think that as department heads, and I'm not trying to point fingers at any department, but it's a reality in business and service, that there are savings out there, you need to speak to the employees and get serious about looking at efficiencies. Doesn't mean cuts. Doesn't mean cuts, it means efficiencies, and there are savings. So, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, we need to put that in place first.
I think we need to put that in place, absolutely, but, anyway, thank you, Counsel Christian, Counsel Fatah, and then I'll finish off, and then we'll have a recorded vote.
This has to be stated, but we are, we're looking, we're honestly all have, have good intentions, I know that, and, and we're reaching for what we think we have control over, but, and Ms. Shell can probably correct me on this, but out of the 140 city staff that make in excess of $100,000, only about 26 are not fire and police. So, when Counsel Christian made reference to the fact that we, that we, we don't have control, basically, we have no control over that, that's a huge part of our, our costs. And sadly, we, we're sitting here, reaching for something that we, I guess, we do have some control over. And I think personally, I think Mr. Girardi has done a very good job in, in this past while, in terms of reducing costs, and I think that we would, we would expect him to continue to do that, and to do the best he can as far as, as far as reducing, finding ways, finding creative ways to reduce our costs. It just seems to me that, as far as this resolution goes, I get seconded, I'm not in favor of the, I'm not really totally in favor of this study, because, quite frankly, we've, we've done, I, I would say, since, since I came on board, we've done about 18 studies, and most of them are collecting dust on shelves. And I know that studies are something that sometimes we seem to automatically reach for, and, and, and I agree with most of what counsel is saying here, that another study probably is, isn't fair in simply attacking this one department, whereas perhaps it should be something right across the board. But if this resolution has any merit, I think we have to look at it from the point of view that we've got to deal with, with PWT as we do other departments, we have to expect efficiencies, and I know that, again, Mr. Girardi has done that, he's done that, I think, to, to the best of his ability. I think, you know, comments are always being made to me, and, and I'll share this only because we're on this topic, but people often say that when they see city works out there doing jobs, they see five, six people, and maybe only a handful of them actually have tools in their hands, so, that comment, we always hear. I heard it just this past week, I heard it. That's something about that in, in itself, means that efficiencies are not totally as good as they could be. Maybe the foremans aren't doing their job, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that. But efficiencies in terms of the obvious, what the perception that Public Works gives out there, when they're out there, and they're, and, not me saying this, but, but the public is saying this, that there, there could be efficiencies in terms of supervision, and, and how the supervisors do their job. But anyway, that's just, that's besides the point. The main thing here is that we're, we're attacking this one department, and, and that, I, I have to agree that it's not fair, but we have to expect efficiencies. So, I will not be voting for this as it stands, only because I'm not, I'm not a huge fan of consulting, I'm not. I mean, I don't know what it's going to cost, I would suggest that it will cost less than a couple hundred thousand dollars. I, we know what the one cost for, for, for police services, I questioned that myself, I really didn't know why it was so high.
Okay, so can, Counsel Fatah, I think you're, you're done your point.
Anyway, all I'm going to say is that...
You're repeating yourself now, though, so can we...
Unless there's, unless there's, there's appetite for a, an adjustment to this, my, my thinking on this is that we have to expect, we're going to do it in-house, I would expect that we get efficiencies from that point of view.
So, I'm going to wrap this up with some comments, just so you, I mean, obviously we know where the vote's going to go, but I think it's important that kind of we all know what each other thinks. You know, we use a lot of, I think, unnecessarily dark language sometimes, we talk about attacking and privatization, and we can't be the bearer of bad news. I don't see this in that respect at all. I see it as gathering information, and, and I think Counsel Christian and Counsel Neer make a good point, and it was similar to a point I was trying to make earlier, it comes from our desire to try and solve some problems. And in lieu of kind of recommendations or specific, you know, paths that staff would provide, or plans that staff would provide, we're going to keep on trying to come up with ways that we can, we can do that. But, you know, I hearken back to when I pushed and advocated for a, a third-party review of our economic development efforts. I heard some of that same negative language, you got to work with people, you got to, you draw people together, it's not the time to do this. That has been a tremendous exercise, and everybody who has participated in that, to a larger degree than I have, have reached out to me and said it's been a tremendous exercise, from the EDC to the Innovation Center, to the parties who have been brought in, private sector operators who have been brought into City Hall to talk about that, and we're confident, we're going to get a really good report from that, for city council to make some decisions from. And I have a tremendous amount of respect for Larry. I, I think, he's a great commissioner, I think he works hard, and I think he really sincerely cares about and respects counsel's direction. Wanting to, to get additional kind of third-party truth-tested information from, like, a specific industry expert who knows how these things operate, is not a diminishment of him or the work his department does. And with respect to isolating one department, the three biggest parts of our budget are fire EMS, which I frankly think that, you know, we've done a lot of hard and difficult work on, police, and Counsel Bruny and I are working hard over there, and Public Works is the third biggest. So, you know, in those three things in collective, we're working on our biggest budgets. So, my feeling was, this is good information that wouldn't be relevant to this current budget, but might well be relevant to the 2018 budget, and it's always positive to have an independent set of eyes look at something. We all, in our own lives, you know, I do things the way I do things, thinking it's the right way to do things, but, you know, when you have independent people come in and say, well, there are other ways to do things, and these are some good industry examples you could use, it's often a lot more productive and positive. So, I just, this isn't as negative as we framed it, and it certainly, to me, isn't about privatization, because certainly, I wouldn't, I wouldn't agree to privatize snow removal, it's such an essential core service, it wouldn't, it's something I'd even consider, even if it did save us money. So, I don't think the spirit of Counsel Shoemaker's motion was negative, I think it was very positive, I think he's looking for information, and, and in that respect, I completely support his efforts. So, we'll call a vote on it, it was asked to be recorded by Counsel Shoemaker. Mr. Clerk?
Counsel Fatah?
Four.
Counsel Christian?
Against.
Counsel Hoopinen?
Against.
Counsel Shoemaker?
Four.
Counsel Romano?
Against.
Counsel Neer?
Against.
Counsel Bruny?
Against.
Counsel Myers?
Against.
Counsel Butland?
Against.
Mayor Provenzano?
Four.
Motion fails. Counsel, we have about three minutes to wrap up the meeting without having to extend the time limit. Into the bylaw section, Counsel Shoemaker has a conflict on bylaw 2016-177. So, a motion by Counselors Neer and Hoopinen, resolve that bylaw 2016-177, being a bylaw to amend to St. Mary's zoning bylaws 2005-150 and 2005-151, concerning lands located at 267 Cathcart Street, be passed in open council this 24th day of October 2016.
All in favor?
Carried. For motion by Counselors Neer and Hoopinen, resolve that all bylaws under item 11 of the agenda and addendum, under date 2016-1024, be approved, save and accept 2016-177.
All in favor?
Carried. Motion by Counselors Neer and Shoemaker, resolve that this council proceed into closed session to discuss the acquisition of properties in the downtown area, and one legal matter, potential renegotiation of a contract. Further, be it resolved that should said closed session be adjourned, that council may reconvene in closed session to continue to discuss the same matters without the need for a further authorizing resolution.
All in favor?
Carried. And a motion by Counselors Neer and Shoemaker, resolve that this council shall now adjourn.
All in favor?
Carried.